Okay. It's June 29th and welcome to the City Council Financial Retreat. And I would remind you all again that for audio pickup, please bring the mic close to you when you speak. Move them around because otherwise we don't pick it up.
And it's not coming through the loudspeaker.
It's not coming through the loudspeaker. Okay, while he's checking on that, all seven council members are here and accounted for. And it looks like almost the whole staff is here.
Well, most of the directors. I wouldn't say the whole staff. They're working hard.
So, Mr. City Manager, would you like to review the order of today's retreat?
Right, thank you very much. Basically, I just wanted to thank you all for your attendance this afternoon. This meeting is being broadcast on Channel 21. It's also being streamed as well. And it will be available for viewing on our website after the fact. Also, a special thanks to the work of the finance staff who have put a lot of work into this and who are here to share information and continue our dialogue about cities finances. As you know, a discussion about finances is something that we do do periodically. A strong financial position is one of those things that sets us apart from many of our peers. This has not been achieved by accident, but has been achieved through design and planning. We look ahead several budgets and consider this a best practice. I have seen and heard comments that the city is about to fall off of a financial cliff. That is not the case. We have no bonded debt. We have strong reserves. We have ongoing investments in needed infrastructure. The City Council has foregone the 1% property tax increase for the last eight years. Some have said that the council should have taken the 1% annually. To do so, however, it would have taken money out of our citizens' pockets ahead of any need. Most cities are envious of our financial position. We've had a history of financially prudent and responsible city councils, and I'm sure that trend will continue. We look forward to a good discussion and dialogue about what we've heard from our citizens and an exploration of options to take us responsibly into the future. At this point, I'd like to turn things over to our Finance Director, Aaron Anton, to start things off.
All right, so I want to just start with some level-setting type of information. So, we're going to go back to the January Council Retreat when we first had this discussion on the long-term financial overview and walk through, just as a reminder, of what that information was, and then we'll proceed from there. So, as you recall, back in January, we went through the 1718 adopted budget at that time and looked at our modeling assumptions for the long-range forecast. So, I'm going to go pretty quickly through this, just as a reminder, this is also online. We have that available. So, 1718 biannual budget, that was the overview at the time. Revenue is $154 million. Total with balances, $216 million. The total revenue budget picture, $154 million overall, and it shows a breakdown of the different categories of revenue, with property tax being the greatest one, and no new taxes as part of the 1718 budget setting process.
But that was including transfers, right? 23 million transfers?
The transfers are the 23 million, yes. Yep. Right. So, then the general fund-only revenue picture, the share of property taxes gets bigger because the total dollars went down to the 84 million. That's just the general fund. It gives you a split of the other types of funds that are in the general fund. We looked at the metric of revenue fund per capita. We'll come back to that, so I won't spend time on that now, but that was the picture of the total property sales, utility, and fees in other categories for East Side cities. On the expenditure side, $199 million for the 1718 original adopted budget, ending fund balance is $17 million. This is the picture of the overall fund chart, so we use this to kind of organize the thoughts around how the funds are organized within the city, and the point here being that the operating funds shaded in that yellow, mustard-yellow picture gives you the category of those types of funds versus the white, that's the capital funds.
So, Aaron, a lot of people sometimes get confused between general fund and operating funds.
Yes. And even among the operating funds, there's a distinction between internal service funds, the proprietary funds, and then the general operating funds, which are referred, the general operating funds are general fund and special, the street special revenue fund. Those two specific funds are the general operating funds, and that's what we use for the operating forecast.
So, when you talk about a crossover, which funds are you?
Just the general fund and the street special revenue fund.
Okay.
Those two in the middle. Yep. So, overall expenditure budget gives you a flavor for the different categories of expenditures, street, general, capital, and then the other funds. We looked at the metrics of general fund per capita expenditures on the East Side, compared that to our East Side city comparisons and the different categories. These are all dollar per capita. And again, the $17 million was, at that time, our ending fund balance position for 2018. So, recall, this is back in January, so this was the prior 2016 action when we were setting the 1718 budget. So, that $17 million total number for all fund balances, keep that in mind, as well as the 5.7 plus 6.5, which are those ending fund balances, just for this general street and a general operating fund and a general street fund. Roughly about $12 million there. Okay? So, then we looked into the forecasts. We always review the assumptions, so we did that. Went through the revenue assumption side, looked at the property tax projections for 2019 forward, talked about new construction element of that. We talked about the assumption that was in that forecast at that time of continuing to bank the 101% allowable levy capacity, talked about sales tax, development revenue based on the unit forecast from Department of Community Development. On the expenditure assumption side, we walked through what our projected increases after the budget period were, at the 2.4% for public safety. We looked at the FTE assumptions. The total FTE is 114.75. Now, remember, total FTE, that's for all funds, all cities. So, when we're looking at just the assumptions for a forecast, we would just be looking at the general fund and street FTEs. That's what would be in the numbers. So, that's another distinction to keep in mind, I guess, is the way to say that. We did remove the inter-fund transfers, so you don't have those in the forecast period. And contingencies. Contingencies were budgeted in '17, but we didn't re-forecast those in future periods. So, it's in '17 only. And that's what created this chart, graph, where we were looking at the inflection point being in 2020. And that is when the operating expenses would outpace operating revenues. So, we have the operating definition at the top. The expenditure line in 2017 is higher than the revenue, and that's because of the contingencies that were included in that. So, remember, the '17 had the $3 million contingencies, which is about 7% of the 2017 budget.
Can we talk about that a little bit more? Because I had a, you and I had an offline conversation, and I hadn't quite grasped that we took the expenses of the contingencies in '17, but I'm still trying to grasp what that means. If we don't spend that, then we have $3 million more throughout the whole time. On the flip side of that, if we have contingencies that exceed that $3 million during this seven-year period, it moves to the left. So, it's a big assumption that can change when that crossover actually occurs.
Well, actually, the contingency doesn't necessarily change where the crossover is projected to occur, because whatever is not spent in contingency becomes part of the ending fund balance. So, the crossover point has nothing to do with ending fund balance.
Well, see, and that's why I'm still trying to grasp what it really means, because if you take that $3 million, that assumption out, and we don't spend the contingencies, then in year 2020, when you're showing a crossover, you're not crossing over. You've got $3 million more. If you assume, you never spend the contingencies.
No.
So, the 2020 number does not include contingencies in it. So, there's no projected contingency in 2020.
So, what we could have done is taken, we could have taken out the contingency and not even had it in here at all, and then that red line on the far-left side would be below the blue line.
And you'd have a $3 million more ending fund balance.
Ending fund balance. Basically, you're saving a count.
Okay.
From the flip side, what happens if we have gross overruns that were not expected, like when you were building City Hall, that were excessive overruns that took place? Then you don't have it in the contingency, so what then happens?
Okay, that is a capital, not an operating. So, that wouldn't come into play. That's why we pay such close attention to, basically, our business model. But it's a good point, that if, in fact, we did overspend on operations, then the crossover point or the reflection point would be achieved or be seen earlier. But...
Yeah, so the other thing I want to...
Before we go on, just as a point, if we were to take on a lot of debt servicing obligation, that would be in the operating side, correct?
It depends. It depends.
Is that full?
Don't you like that answer?
We'll get into that later, okay?
Okay.
So, the other thing I wanted to highlight...
One more question. Oh.
Would you go back to the assumption slide? And the assumptions, yeah, they're public safety. We projected it 2.4%. As you know, we had our meeting yesterday, and FIRE initially looked at an 11% increase for next year, and then they modified that, and it's now going to be a, at this point, it's going to be a 6.7 increase. Both Landy from North Bend and us in Issaquah brought up the fact that, "Why is this so big?" And they said, "Well, you should have known, because this was all part of the union contract, so you should have been able to predict better, and it shouldn't have been a surprise."
Aaron, on the order of things, are we going to do overview here and then get into details?
Right. Yep. So, let's go to... I just wanted to mention one more thing. So, the highlights on the right-hand side of this graph, I want to emphasize that it does not account for accumulated fund balance. So, when we're talking about the fund balances, this graph does not have that in there at all. This is just looking at the annual structure.
Aaron?
Yep.
Hasn't the history of that chart, though, been that it continually moves to the right over a period of time?
Yes, this is all a forecast, so it's not a certainty that these things, yes.
So, if I were to go back to when I first joined the council, the crossover point was five years away when I came on the council. It's still roughly five years away.
Yeah, so I would say there's been very good performance to budget.
I think we can credit that to your coming on council.
No, I credit to everyone doing a good job on...
Likewise, is leaving to having a session.
Right, so our assumption in 1718 is the budget, right? And our history is we under-run the budget on the expenditure side. I mean, typically overrun on the revenues, because revenue is usually positive, so...
Right.
Which is positive financial performance that year after year continues to happen. You want to assume that we're going to... So, then we pointed out future considerations, just general approaches there, and then we talked about some options initially. This is, again, back in January, gave some general information on that, and we looked at a discussion point at that time, so I wanted to now move to what's happened since those, that five months ago. So, we've done the statistically valid resident survey. We've gone and done a citizen roundtable on city finances back in April. You have the summary of those inputs in your packet of information. Yeah, actually, we're all there as well, but that gives you some summary data. Virtual Town Hall on city finances, Finance Committee has seen the data to date. Tim is going to have a little bit more information on that a little bit later. And then we have continuing input from multiple sources, right? So, we have continuing Finance Committee meetings that have happened. We had study sessions, council meetings, other things that are all public meetings, public events. We had newsletter articles, a lot of open public outreach and input. And again, this session itself is streamed-record and will be, have a playback option, as our council meetings do as well. So, at that time, in January, we had the request for a retreat to come back to this topic in July. We moved that up slightly, so we're here on June 29th. I mention that because the data flow is different if you have it in July versus June. We don't have June results yet. So, other updates. So, since January, we had the Year-In 2016 Financial Performance Presentation to Council. We had the Carry Forward, Moving Those Balances, that was combined. We also have some major plans that are now underway, the Transportation Master Plan, the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. Those are all in process as we're moving through 2017. Also, TIP was just adopted two nights ago, and then ongoing budget monitoring activities. So, those are your financial management reports that you get regularly from us, showing budget to actual variances. So, that continues throughout every month for the whole budget period. So, then we had some additional requests to take a look at debt capacity and what, specifically what a bond principal of 1.2 million would fund through 2020. Those questions and information are in your packet material. REIT, we had a question on real estate excise tax and the portion that could be used for operations. So, that question and the detail associated are also in your packet. We'll take a look just briefly at capital revenues, major capital revenues. That's going to be the next slide. And then there's some other information in your packet. There's a request for property tax levy rate information, and so I'm going to pass that around now. So, this is the collection of municipalities that is just surveying their 2017 property tax rates by city or area per thousand assessed valuation. So, it's a graphic to provide some background data on that, specific to property tax levy rates. Let's see, so then there was information about, just in general, property tax, utility tax, transportation benefit districts. So, those are things that we hit on in summary, but you have the detail of what those options are that are included in your packet as well. An additional piece was the utility tax information. We had a survey of that information from several years ago, actually, and that's also in your packet. That shows a breakdown of King County cities and all the King County cities that have already, were levying utility taxes back years ago, and then their populations. So, you have a view of, from large to small, of those cities, what that looks like. So, only three cities did not have a utility tax back when that information was put together.
That was Sammish, Sea-Tac, and Newcastle at that time, out of the 39 cities.
Okay, so the capital, major capital revenues, real estate excise tax, parks impact fees, and transportation impact fees. Those are your three major capital funding areas, and this gives a historical picture of '15 and '16, actual, the '17 and '18 forecast. So, you can see '16 for real estate excise tax was higher. We are being conservative, and we're conservative in the 1718 forecast period. And then we'll look a little bit later on activity to date, because we're always looking at these. Once we set them in on an annual basis, we want a monthly look at those numbers and see if there's a different trend that's developing throughout the year. So, you'll get those in those monthly financial reports. So, current budget summary, again, reminding you of that prior picture of the $17 million total fund balance for '18. At that time, about roughly $12 million in the general and street funds. Then we had that Year-In 2016 Performance Presentation that happened in May, and this is the slide from that presentation. Shows the general fund adjusted ending fund balance, $15.8 million. Street fund, $7.8 million. So, you're looking at a little bit over $23 million there from just those two funds. And then in total, $46 million. Now, that fund balance position rolls into 2018, because we didn't take any other actions at that time to increase any expenditures in '18. We were just rolling the money, the performance from the prior period through. So, that rolls into total ending fund balance. So, now comparing this number to the 2018 previously, so remember the $17 million, that's where that 20, that new number is $27 million. So, that was back on May, that we're given that update. So, a difference of $10 million in total, and then your new numbers for just the general fund and street fund are $20.5, $20.6 million there versus the $12 million number. So, that's the current state look at the budget. Okay, that's where we are. Now, the monitoring activities. So, then we take a look at through May, and I don't have June numbers yet, so that's why we're using May. Revenue side first, so through May, five months of the year, that would be just under 42% of the year complete, and these are our top 10 operating capital revenues and then all other. And you can see we're clipping it on pretty good. The 46.9% collected out of that total budget of $65.99 million, $30.95 million has been collected through May. And then you can see by category the different items. So, this is out of the financial management, those monthly financial management reports, so you can see this every month as it moves through. This was just a snapshot through May.
Kathy?
Very tiny amount, but why did our investment interest earnings go up? Was that because we have more money as opposed to them raising the rates?
Well, it's...
Or is it a combination?
It's our good investment portfolio management.
Oh, good.
But it is a product of, you know, we're taking advantage constantly. We use any idle cash, and we're investing that as it comes. So, as the cash balance grows, if it's not being put in use, we're daily sweeping that to be getting as much as we can out of those interest earnings. So, there's also a lag with investment earnings expectations, because our budget number is set back in the fall last, and you know the market moves more than six months at a time.
Well, we're all looking for higher investment interest, so if you've got any tips for us.
Well, so, I did okay for, through May.
Aaron, on the impact fees, the traffic impact fees are at 31%, parks at 93%. Is this because we projected low on parks, or is it because the developers are paying the parks' fees first? Do we know the answer to that?
Yeah, so, go ahead, Chris. You can... I have Chris answer.
It's the Town Center. They're doing a lot of transportation projects themselves, so we're not getting impact fees. They're getting credits. And they're also paying a lot of park impact fees for all those apartment buildings.
Very good. Thank you.
The other thing I was going to point out, property tax is a bit different in that it's paid twice a year. So, typically, we receive the first half of property tax due April 30th of each year. So, at that particular point in time, that's when most, the bulk of the money comes through. Some people don't pay 50%. They pay all of it early to get it out of the way, but that's why we're showing the percent collected above 50%. But it's typically the collection pattern that we do see.
And that general profile is true of surface water management fees as well that are built through that same mechanism. Okay, and then on the expenditure side, so through May, 41.7% of the year is complete, $114 million in budgeted expenditures actually have spent, 20.6, 18% spent to date through May. You can see a large portion of that in the capital funds as those get going and through the summer construction periods and all of that. So, there's time phasing associated with this, but it gives you a flavor for what expenditures are doing against budget for their early trends. Yes, they did. They catch up for five months.
Yeah, I think they billed us in May, so they just barely squeaked in.
Use the mic, please. Use the mic, please.
I just asked him to go back to the other slide so we could take an extra minute to look at the numbers.
What about the GEO debt service? We haven't paid it yet, is that it?
It's in June.
In June?
Yeah, June is the, so we're just missing that.
There are about three years left on there?
Yeah.
Aaron, why is risk management so high? Is that...
So, that's an, I believe that's the annual insurance piece. So, that's our liability insurance and just when it's paid.
Yeah, that's an annual amount, and we pay that in January for the whole year.
Okay. So, then again, long-term general approaches, looking at lower expenditures, revenues, a combination of both. Adding to this, the, what we've highlighted already, the utilization of reserves in the short term, and then what do we want to do in the longer term. AWC had, Association of Washington Cities, have proposed the removal of the 1% property tax cap, and that note was on there back in January. That discussion has still continued. It's, you know, so that's part of the overall state actions that could potentially happen, but that's what the Association of Washington Cities continues to propose. So, it could certainly impact what levies, or, yeah, levy limit gets put in place for us, and so that our calculations could be. But yes, we've taken below that 1% for all eight prior years, so it's be more of a cumulative type of look there. So, some revenue considerations. So, again, bringing back the revenues per capita slide, just as a reminder, $730 bucks per capita for Sammish, and then you see comparable jurisdictions and then the different categories of sources that they have. So, have the lowest there from a revenue perspective. We had direction at, kind of, at the end of the discussion of the January retreat, there was not support to move forward looking at BNO tax. So, that discussion happened then, so I've put an X through that, because that was the discussion at that time, and of course, we're looking at all options at the moment, so just reminding council that that was the discussion point there.
Given the ST3 TAB tax and the reaction to it, I think that that one's not very palatable anymore either.
Well, the nice, that may be the case from a political standpoint, but the nice thing about the transportation benefit district is that you have, for example, a direct nexus to transportation, and it may be something the council might want to consider to put into the overlay. So, people drive their cars on the streets of Sammish, and the transportation benefit district revenue could actually be used as part of the street operating fund for the overlay program. And at least people would have a direct nexus to the taxes paid than to the services that they receive. So, that is something to consider down the road.
Lyman, we can always tie it to debt servicing, too.
Sure. You could, you could put it toward debt service on transportation improvement projects as well.
Well, we were in Walla Walla this weekend, and they have imposed that transportation benefit district, and they're using sales tax as opposed to the tabs, and it is for the purpose of overlaying the roads. And they use the sales tax because they felt that people that are coming into the community and are driving in the community will help pay for the fact that they're driving on the roads. So, it's, they get a little more for it, though, because they do have a lot of wineries and hotels and other things that we don't.
All the tourists.
Okay. So, moving to general operating expenses. So, this is a slide that we've seen before, but just wanted to bring it back as a reminder. It gives a good overview of general and street service costs that are part of the budget at current time and the different, it's a by-department look, so you can see that. Public safety being the largest of the general operating costs for the $7.0... Public safety being the largest of the general operating costs for 7.6 million for fire emergency and 7.1 for police. And then it gives the other categories there. So public works, street maintenance, parks. The road overlay program is split out of the public works, street maintenance. So show that program separately so that you can see that that's a significant investment that council's chosen to make in the roadway overlay program, 3.5 million a year. So these are only 17 budget numbers. It's the other thing to mention. So you are looking at an annual, annual list here and then the combination of departments in the other areas. So the note there is there is a mix of contracting and in-house on all of these. And of course, aware of that, just wanted to do that as a reminder. And then the top two are all entirely contracted with Eastside Fire and Rescue and then the King County Sheriff's Office for Police Services.
And some of the departments have operating revenues that counter the operating expenses like community development.
That's right.
Many, many of the services there pay for, pay for their own.
Right.
Are these numbers net of that or?
No, it's not net of that. These are just out of the budgeted cost in 2017.
So it's not out of the general and streets, general street funds?
These are in the general and street funds, the costs, full costs are. It's not net in that it doesn't take the revenues. Yeah. It's not net because we're not taking, we're not reducing the cost by the revenue that these departments are bringing in. So permit revenue and development revenue, business license fees, all of those things that we're not netting out the cost of the departments. We're just showing total cost of these different departments. And then bringing back a reminder, the per capita expenditure slide. So this is from 2015. It was 622 per capita general categories here. An important note here is this, this is based on the local government finance reporting system. That's from the state auditor's office. It's a database that they maintain. And so this database is built from all of those account coding, the bars, the budget accounting and reporting system. So that's uniform requirement for all cities and municipalities. So the data coming out of that is everybody's required to code these things and the auditor is auditing to those coding requirements. So you are getting an apples to apples by category here.
Kathy?
I see fire and EMS. Where do police fit in? Because we group it in other places as public safety.
Yeah, the, the bars manual has it in law and justice category. And so that's, that's why it's worded a little bit differently there.
And it's interesting how low law and justice is for our city compared to the other cities.
And fire too.
That's right.
Those are dollars. And then that was in 15. So what I could update is the 17 number for Sammamish. I don't have it for all the other jurisdictions because I'm relying on that database that the state has. And so the 17 numbers, it just bumps it up to 666 from the prior number for Sammamish. But even that is under all of the other cities 2015 numbers. So I was going to go kick it over to Tim to review some of the virtual town hall inputs because that was the other thing that we received inputs between January and now. So we had some of that discussion.
Well, you skipped over the questions, whether anybody had any further questions on your, your presentation.
I do, I would like to go back all the way to the...
Bring it closer.
I would like to go back all the way to the crossover point, that discussion a little bit and just, that's a financial process that Lyman, I don't know if you created that? Is that a standard evaluation that all cities use? If you could explain how that came about?
Okay.
And, and is there a comparison to other cities?
Well, thank you. That's a very good question. Actually, one, one of the things that we decided to do in Sammamish from early on was to take a different look than other cities did. And we wanted to project into the future and do better financial planning than we were seeing from other entities. Most cities actually are at the point where they are on an annual basis or a biennial basis fighting the crossover point. And they're frequently faced with having to cut expenditures for that particular budget that they're dealing with. And so they've got a much shorter time term approach than we've done. And this has worked well for us in, in looking ahead. So we've not reached the crossover point, which was an earlier discussion. But that, that is something that, it was, it was a term that we termed or coined early 2000s, I guess, when we decided that we wanted to look ahead. It's better to look and forecast further out with the understanding that the further out you do go, the, the less likely that you're going to be as accurate. But we decided that it would be best to do that and, and with the understanding that we won't be as precise in year six as we are in year two because it does look that way. But it's a very good question.
So most cities or a lot of cities, I don't know if, what the fair characterization of this would be, but what you're saying is they're not even dealing with the crossover point because they are dealing with their budget immediately in the current year.
They are dealing with the crossover point, but they probably don't call it that. They call it a deficit for that particular year, for that particular budget. I actually, in the, if you got the MRSC, I guess flyer today in the mail, email, Stan Finkelstein has an article in there and he talks about doing financial projections like this as a best practice. So we were ahead of the game as far as doing that. So this is why we have periodic discussions on where we are that, that way.
Kathy?
I was just going to comment for historical perspective. The day we opened the doors, we had lost, what was about $2 million on the sales tax equalization. So it kind of caught us up short immediately that we needed to do a little more thought process. But we were pretty scattered at the beginning, just trying to find how to get computers to run. So once we actually got a finance staff, and thank you very much because you've been just incredibly helpful in this whole process. And then once the 1% cap came in, there was a recognition that with that 1% cap and you've got expenditures, we see like our public safety expenditures increasing, if it's even two or three or 4%, things are happening that we're going to bounce against that 1% cap over some point in time. And I know other cities have remarked at how thoughtful we were and how they've begun to model their thought process after us. And I won't mention the name of the city. We went to a meeting and we were talking about expenditures and they said if they had to spend another 100,000 on something, they wouldn't know where they would find the money to pay for it.
Was that Seattle?
No, not Seattle. But I feel, I mean, I feel really confident that our look ahead is going to keep us out of that position.
Good.
And maybe just to qualify, having served as a budget director at Seattle and King County, they are looking into the out years. So they're looking three, four years out. So, and unfortunately, they're, they, because their financial situation's a little different, are often facing deficits. But they are doing long-term projections. So I just, I heard that other cities weren't doing that, but, but there are, there are jurisdictions in the region that are doing that, that look out.
And in fact, the state is now required to look two bienniums out.
That's correct, two bienniums out, although there's pressure because of the shortfalls to take that out for that reason so they can be more frivolous with the money.
Okay. Aaron, go ahead. Turn it over to Tim.
All right. Excuse me. There we go. Before I begin, I, I might make a note about Virtual Town Hall, our public input tool. I think, I think it's working pretty well. We've heavily publicized this finance retreat and I would say in terms of people who are here, there's probably half a dozen people here and probably only a couple of them aren't actual candidates for council. So even though you publicize these sorts of things a lot, it's hard to get people to turn out for public meetings. And one of the values of Virtual Town Hall...
At 2 o'clock? People are at work.
The same holds true for the Pro Plan and other meetings we've had where we heavily advertise public meetings. We have very low turnout, understandably, people are busy. I was just trying to highlight the value of this online public input tool. We've had 337 people came to the Virtual Town Hall on city finances, had a total of 175 responses, some of them registered, some of them not registered. Registered is where you actually give your address and that way we can map the response. Unregistered are people who don't want to give their address. That's the equivalent of 8.8 hours of public testimony at three minutes per person. This virtual, Virtual Town Hall closed on June 23. I gave this same report to the finance committee just a few days ago. The numbers have changed a little bit since then. But these are the final numbers to some basic questions. Should the city diversify its revenue sources by adding a new tax? 27.5% said yes. 72.5 said no. Keep in mind, these are self-selected people who decided to jump on and express their, their feelings. I would say self-selected people tend not to be the most contented people. You know, sometimes they're a little irritated about something and they're the ones who are most motivated to jump onto a survey like this. Would you be willing to pay more in taxes so the city could buy land and protect it from development? 59.8% said no. Would you be willing to pay more in taxes so the city could build and improve roads more quickly? 68% said no. If necessary, would you support the issuance of bonds so the city could fund some of its priorities with debt? 52% said yes. Follow-up question, would you be willing to vote for higher property taxes to pay off those bonds? 73.7% said no. Little cognitive dissonance, to use a phrase. Should the city leave revenues where they are and spend within or under these limits? 71% said yes. Should the city increase its revenues so investments in roads, land preservation and other priorities can be funded more quickly? 56.4% said no. I went through all the verbatims and just chose what I thought was a representative group. And then I followed that up with a subsampling, which I highlighted in yellow. Freeze new construction, add senior services, help the homeless, lay off city staff, gulp. No new taxes, protect trees, increase property taxes, raid my lips, no new taxes. I will gladly pay more taxes for road improvements. Roads, 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 no new taxes, live within your means, enough is enough. The last page is interesting because it's a nice contrast. This is from our statistically valid community survey that's random. People don't self-select for this. So this theoretically and probably is a more representative set of sentiments. Would you support or oppose the raising of taxes if it allowed the city to move or to more quickly build new roads and improve existing roads? 64% supported that idea. 23% strongly, 41% somewhat. Next question, would you support or oppose the use of tax revenue to buy land, preserve trees and protect open space? I thought this was a pretty amazing figure in this statistically valid survey. 86% would strongly or somewhat support using tax revenue to buy land. Yes. Tim, we talked about this in the finance committee the other day. We were looking for reasons why. And I think you hit on it a minute ago when you said, social media tends to be self-selecting to an extent. Social media can also drive people to the pole, particularly if it's a certain, shall we say subset of the population that has an opinion one way or another. After that conversation, I happened to meet with a consultant we've hired to talk about our effectiveness in, in social media and that sort of thing. And basically, she agreed with that conclusion. So I found that reassuring that an outside expert would view this the same way as we did during the finance committee. I just wanted to say that.
Okay.
So I was going to make a comment that, aren't you glad that we have representative democracy so that you, it's up to you as council to decide, you know, which, which people, what's the true sentiment that's out in the community, the, between the two surveys? What we're hearing is conflicted. There's no doubt about that. So, and it does vary, but it's hard to put actual numbers on things like that, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm glad I don't have to make those choices. I, I'm free of that, so.
Is that why you heard this?
That's right.
Done?
Yes, remember?
Two points. First of all, yes, social media drives, but the city was also driving people on social media to come on to this. So let's also not forget that that was one of our roles, was to drive people on to it. And I think that what we're seeing on the Virtual Town Hall in many ways reflects what we heard in the town hall and what we're hearing on the streets. Additionally, I think we should take into account in this process, while this does take a little bit of the ST3 card tab tax that's come in, it doesn't take in the ST3 property taxes that are coming in. It doesn't take into account tomorrow, there's going to be a whole new revenue package of new taxes being announced by the Senate. It doesn't take into account the ARDS tax, the health and wellbeing tax, the homeless taxes that are all coming down. And the frustration people are starting to voice out, I mean, there are people talking about, will we have a Proposition 13 if these taxes all come to fruition in the state?
We're, we keep talking about social media, but social media isn't necessarily driving who is ending up on the Virtual Town Hall because people, as soon as they registered for the very first Virtual Town Hall, then get a subsequent email for all Virtual Town Halls. So that's somewhat driven directly by peak democracy. And then as well, the city uses its eGov delivery to email out to anyone who's registered, which is also exclusive of social media. So I just wanted to make that distinction. This is, the Virtual Town Hall is not exclusively driven by social media.
I think the Virtual Town Hall though is valuable. It generates interest and participation. As long as we recognize it's not necessarily statistically significant. A lot of the things that came out in the Virtual Town Hall, we also heard in the roundtable. And, and we heard it maybe in a different percentage in the statistically valid survey. So...
I think it's also just really important, instead of having, you know, the usual eight people here at the podium at a city council meeting, to have 175 people expressing their point of view, including people who are too shy to step up to a podium or too busy and so on and so forth.
Right.
I do have a question.
Okay, Tom first.
When you say statistically significant, what's the sigma? Because it depends on how many people actually respond, right?
5%, isn't it?
Well, we, in this last survey, I think we had 600 respondents and I think that drove a plus and minus of 4%.
Okay, okay. Thanks. It was over 4%. Kathy?
That was one of the questions I was going to ask, how many participated in the statistically valid survey versus this one? So that would be 600 versus 175.
Yeah, but they're, they're completely different, obviously completely different samples.
I understand that. Do we have any understanding of why so many people come to the Virtual Town Hall and then move away from it? Is it difficult to access, difficult to work through? If 337 people come to visit and we only get 175 of them to say anything, is that, am I, am I talking to the next?
Oh, I think, I think a fair number of people don't want to register. You know, there's a fair amount of paranoia about personal data these days. I think that maybe scares some people off and some people just take a look at it and think they're not interested enough to invest their time. I would guess.
I confess to having gone to it, not taken it.
I didn't want to be identified.
I did talk to several people last night when I was at the city of Sammamish booth and asked them if they would like to fill in a written survey and take five minutes while they were there and nobody would take me up on it.
Kristi?
Just a quick comment about the number of visitors. And I, Tom, or I'm sorry, Tim, I'm not sure if that's done by each individual user because, I mean, I'll have, I personally have a tendency and someone who's taken the survey may also have the tendency to repeatedly go back to see what other people are saying. I love to go and look at the word clouds on there because the, the things that have been repeated over and over and over again tend to rise to the top. So I'll go back and look at them. So I don't know if that counts towards the number of visitors. If I go look at it 10 times, am I considered a visitor once or 10 times?
You know, I'm not sure, I'm not sure about that. That's a good question.
That may also be part of that driver.
I mean, I know I check it all the time, but I think as the administrator, I don't count as a visitor. I think they set that aside.
We should be able to figure that out with the IP address.
I'll just ask peak democracy, they'll know the answer.
Standard practice is to measure unique visitors. So you wouldn't count them.
We should be able to figure that out with the IP address.
I'll just ask peak democracy, they'll know the answer.
Standard practice is to measure unique visitors, so you wouldn't count, I would guess, but you might want to confirm that.
Okay.
Okay. Tim, is that the end of your presentation?
Yes, it is.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So moving on to council discussion at this point, so on your agenda, under item number six, there's those last item, the questions, considerations to have council consider, and so those have been put on a slide so we can have those all in one spot and you can visually see these as we go through this. Given the inputs, both from today and the last five months, the question is, does council wish to provide direction to staff on the following at this time and then list those different items that we can consider in our discussion? I don't know if you want to go through them one at a time or if you want to take...
But before we go through them, just a reminder, we are going to have some pizza coming in at 4:30 or thereabouts.
Oh, I thought we were going to be done by then.
You could be.
If you are, then you don't get any pizza. Okay, why don't we start with the first one?
Before we start with that, can we understand what other revenue activities we have on? For example, we are going to be doing a stormwater rate study, which could potentially increase stormwater rates for all of our individuals in the city. And so before we can get into this conversation, are there any other potential ways that revenue is going to be increasing or increasing and impacting our citizens before we start talking about some of these other issues?
Anybody have any input? Aaron?
Well, sure. So the 2017 stormwater rate study is in the workflow plan and that's scheduled to happen during 2017. That's already in the budget, 1718 adopted budget as well. We annually update the fee schedule, so that would be if there was a desire to go through different fee analysis, we could provide that direction and we could work on that. No new revenue sources are planned at the current time.
Mr. Meyer, can I make a comment? Just a reminder, I know I don't need to remind the council because your calendars are so full, but you're working on a number of really critical strategic plans right now. They are all timed such that we have results, recommendations, adopted policies in 2018 to inform your 2019, 20 budget process. The big ones, transportation, the transportation master plan, the parks plan, the pro plan, urban forestry management plan, may also have some recommended policies, action items, your human services needs assessment, your communication strategic plan. So all of these are going to be rolling up for a pretty robust discussion next year. That's on the expenditure side, but we'll also be looking at implementation strategies, so.
Bob, did you want to say something?
I do. This, this may not be the right place to ask this question. We may further along have more, more discussion in this area about traffic and building roads. You know, we, there's one way of looking at how do we get the money and how do we fund it? We know we have, you know, a substantial deficit that has existed in the city for a long time, but what are we capable of building? I mean, there's, there's also, we could look for all the money we want. We could have a long discussion about should we, should we be getting more money? The transportation master plan is going to give us some priorities, but I'm just curious if we could build three roads or two roads, major projects in a year or one in a particular year. We don't have staff that could go beyond that right now in the area because of all the construction going on at the state level. The contractors, I think we're running into the fact that there's no cement available, there's resources that aren't available, the subcontractors and the contractors are really busy. So even if we have a very robust, robust discussion on how much money can we get, how much can we really build? And I'm just looking for the staff comment on, from a throughput point of view, what can we really do?
That's, that's a very good point and it, not only is it just staff resources, it's the community's ability to withstand the construction in the physical environment. If we had three major projects going on in the city at the same time, you'd have gridlock and it would, over a short term, make the issue worse. It'll be very interesting to see on the Issaquah Falls City Road when that happens. Basically, at what point does the, do the citizens cry uncle and say, you know, we can't, this is really, really difficult for us? And that will be a difficult project for them. We have had discussions in the past that we basically want to try to meter things out and not have a project within the same, I guess, commute flow for people. You want to give people an option to get off or off the hill by one means or another. So that's, that's part of it. The other, the other thing I was talking to Aaron about earlier is the, the potential use of debt for funding capital projects, roads, et cetera. And there are times, historically, the city has tried to shy away from that and, and basically said, let, we'll do it, pay as you go. There may be times when it doesn't make sense to do pay as you go. Some of them could include the fact that, let's say you've got an average interest rate on bonds, let's say at 3.5%. Well, your, your construction costs have an inflationary factor to those and that may be, depending on what supply and demand is, may be going forward at 7%. So at that particular point in time, it makes sense to borrow the money at 3.5%, build it now, and you'd be saving that 3.5% differential over the life of that project. The other, the other factor as it relates to debt that is worth considering is the generational equity piece of it. You know, we're probably saddling a lot of our future generations with other problems, but at the same point in time, if we pay for it out of basically our pockets now, their, future generations are going to get the benefit of that going forward without having to, to actually have it come out of their pocket. They'll have other things that come out of their pocket for the future, but that is also a component of that. I don't know, Aaron, did you want to look or talk about the total debt capacity that the city does have? I think you included, included that and we're very fortunate in that we have not really availed ourselves of, of that. There are cities that operate that way. I wouldn't want to, personally, I, I wouldn't want to be one of those cities that runs into that, basically that premise where they have no more debt capacity. There also may be an emergency situation that comes up in the future where you do want to reserve that for something that's really necessary. But Aaron, do you want to run through?
We have a couple of hands raised first, Romero and then Tom.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I like that we're going through these issues and I like the way it's worded, diversify operating in capital revenue sources, which really means what new sources and taxes can we bring on? But I go back to the workshop, the actual workshop we had here, and one of our citizens raised, quite frankly, rightly so, that shouldn't this be the last question that we should be asking, that the first question that we should be asking is what are the levels of services and other cut considerations that are going to be made and that we hold off on this? And that's reinforced, I think, by when you start looking at the April 29 Seattle Times, despite our per capita taxes here on property, we're cited as having the highest of the cities in King County taxes. We're cited that King County is one of the highest in the nation in that article and this resonates with what the people are telling us that they don't want and we're seeing in these surveys. I would go back and say, we need to first look at what are the considerations that we can do internally before we first go to this trigger, number one, in the discussions and focus our time first on it. In January, when we had the city paints the picture crossover, the staff gave us the considerations of what cutbacks, deletions make sense? What are real expenditure numbers and what is saved if we cut the general expenditures by 10%? Cut back to 100 full-time expended, full-time employees and transfer dollars from allowable funds to the general funds? I think that's a good focus to start with and follow that direction. And then after we start to look at these and have input from the council on what might be cut or that, save that for the last item. That's just my take.
Tom, you have a comment?
Actually, I have two or three now that I've been listening to other people, too. First of all, I'd like to thank Lyman for his comment about not wanting to create gridlock. I've lived here long enough, I went through the construction to 2/28th and frankly, there was one day where I tried three, three different ways to get to work and after the third and an hour of trying to get off the plateau, I gave up and went home. And I really don't want to put anyone through that anymore than we have to. The issue of, is this the first question or last question, I think is a good one. I think before we do pull the trigger on debt, we do need to look at, you know, what can we wring out of the budget that maybe is nice to have but can't perhaps survive the test of time, which is why I reacted rather badly the other night to the $250,000 request from the Earth Commission with an ongoing beyond that. I mean, that's a good example of a luxury, frankly, in my opinion. The issue of debt, though, frankly, we, if you look at the non-voted debt capability and if I hope I did the math right here, but if we pull the trigger on all of that, would be about a $12 million debt servicing requirement per year.
Took it all?
If I took it all, if we took it all.
This doesn't make any sense.
Well, it does make any sense, but I don't want, the other thing, too, is I also don't think it's prudent for this council or any council anywhere to simply wipe out the reserve fund as well. So somewhere here is a happy medium. I think we need to go through an exercise of figuring out what we can afford and develop a land to lieu within our means and perhaps adjust the expenditure budgets for the TIP, the parks CIP, et cetera accordingly. I mean, this is what you call, call, call good financial management. The, the other thing, though, is that it does play into one of the big issues that's lurking for our July meeting and that is the whole concurrency question and what it means for how much development we can take up here. Frankly, if we go through all this and decide, hey, you know, we're at our limit unless someone comes up with a pot of cash someplace, and maybe that can happen, there are always grants, but right now we're on a pay as, you know, do it, go on a loan basis here. If that, if we get to that point, you know, we say, hey, that's it for us, much development, we can't take 5,000 units a year, maybe it's 2,000. I'm just pulling numbers out of the air, but my thoughts on the issue.
Good point. I think the number of units per year is more like 300 to 500, isn't it? So Romero posed the question, should we do number three first? What's the, what's the feeling of the council? Three? Okay, we're going to change the order then. We're going to do number three first.
Don, I have two comments before we switch.
Pardon?
I have two questions or comments before we switch.
Okay, good. Go ahead.
With reference to the whole issue of building roads, it seems to me the question is much more complex than was laid out. And I was reminded yesterday, and I think one of the things we have not done is we have not communicated our policy decision to the community that we don't build roads ahead of development. We actually have the developer help pay for the roads and build the roads because they can build them more cheaply than we can do so. And by borrowing money and building, we could be increasing the costs that we are paying for road construction. I'd like a confirmation on that or not. The other thing that I see in terms of building roads ahead is that we potentially could lose grant money if we borrow and build ahead. And so there, I think there's some financial considerations and we need to put that into a little bit of more of a complex calculation when we make that decision. I am, I would be very supportive of Romero's, but I'm not sure that I'm as completely prepared to talk about that today because the way I see it is that we need to, from my perspective, step back, see what expenditures that we might even spend if we can increase the level of service. So for example, someone was talking to me yesterday about, well, could we get additional bus service? Would additional bus service help the roads function better so that we would have a higher level of service and a lower cost than developing the road and maybe we could stretch out our building, our construction period of time? One of the biggest things that we've dealt with over and over again is speeding. And when people speed, families are concerned and don't allow their children to walk to school, so they get in the car and they crowd the roads. Again, can we get one or two police officers at one cost to increase, to help reduce the speed so that people will walk so again, we aren't faced with this immediate demand to build the roads? We've increased safety and we can slow down on the construction, so we're taking cars off the road.
Kristi?
I just have a quick thought and somewhat in line with what she was saying, but on a different side. We can't just look at the cost of what it costs to literally build a road because there is a, an intangible cost to the driver of the car who is sitting in traffic, it's quality of life issue. There are other issues that you can't roll up. It's not our bottom line, it's their bottom line and we have to take that into consideration as well.
Okay. Well, I think we, are we ready to start at question three up there? Item three?
If, if we do do question three, could, I guess from my perspective, if we could look at maybe dividing it into operating and all, and then have that discussion and then also capital as well? So if you could distinguish between those two, I think that would help the discussion.
Good. Which do we want to start with? Operating? Okay, operating. It's pretty hard for the policymakers to divine operating cuts because we're not here day in and day out watching the operation. So I kind of look to staff to say, well, do you see areas where perhaps we could start with the zero-based budgeting or are there any places that you feel we can tighten the belt? I don't know.
I actually take issue with that, given my business experience.
Go ahead.
When the board says, you've got a cut, I had to cut, even though I didn't think I had any room. So as, as a policy, if we as a, as a council says, Mr. City Manager, you need to cut expenses, it's our prerogative as a policy to say that versus asking him. At first, we wouldn't ask if you see some easy, low-hanging fruit, but the hard, high fruit, that's us as policy.
Yeah, I concur.
I was looking for the fruit.
Yeah, always looking for the easy. And when you look at our budget and you look at the two major expenditures, which are police and fire, we can say all we want that we want to reduce the cost by 10%, but how are we going to accomplish that based on the way we are receiving the service? And we've already seen that the fire this year, they were going to go up 11%. They've cut that back to 6.73%, which is pretty significant. And the average over the last few years has been 4%. So when we're only able to increase our revenue by 1%, we've got an issue. So how do we address those two biggest pieces in our budget to control those costs?
Operating budget, how much is it safety?
40%.
Forty? Is that roughly?
Of the general fund.
Of the general, I'm sorry, of the general fund, sorry. Yeah. I think 40 was what I would have guessed.
In round, in round numbers, it's 40?
Yeah.
It was one and two, anyway. So for example, with fire, we could ask staff to talk with the chief about different concepts of providing the service. We go to a different number of fire stations and have... Do we go to a different number of fire stations and have aid stations strategically located? I think, I think there's room for, certainly room for a discussion there.
And we, we have more control over the police as well under their contract model that they have and the numbers that we have of their officers.
Don, I, I agree with that because I know the chief has been looking at, do we have the right number of stations in the right places? Now, that's not a short-term fix, but it could be a long, longer-term fix that would affect the budget going forward. The same time, with respect to policing, perhaps there's some things that can be done there too. Uh, I'm not about to say what it is, but I, I do know that the chief has a plan to add additional resources in. We need to take a look at, do we really need those or do we want to add those resources and back off on some existing resources? Hard choice. No one likes to cut cops. Public safety is basically the third rail in politics. But the, uh, these are decisions that do have to be made. I agree with these two guys that when I've been in corporate life, and I've gone through this several times, you have, you hit turbulence in your flight path and you've got to do some changes and the work comes down. It's 5% this year, another 5% next year on top of the first 5%. It ain't fun, but people do it.
Jesse?
I just wanted to touch base on police services. You might recall that we are discussing with the Public Safety Committee and planning to come to council to talk about doing a police services study. And this would be with a third-party consultant and not, you know, somebody that would work on our behalf, analyze our current model. Even if, if you're interested doing a make versus buy analysis, we currently contract for the service. What would the scenario look like if we hired our own staff directly? And then we will look at all of those other options you might have for modifying services up, down. And really, we're also looking at the long-range implications, particularly as the town center starts to, to build. We will have a need for additional enforcement in our commercial areas, and we need to be planning for that now. That may be 10 years down the road, 20 years, we don't know. So those, that conversation is coming. In fact, in July, the Public Safety Committee will be looking at kind of a, a rough scope of work so that we can talk about the council, to the council about funding that study.
Okay. Bob's next.
I, I want to go back to a question because I, I agree, the board needs to make some decisions. When there is a crisis and you need to look at that budget, somebody's got to make the hard decisions and possibly the operations people would have a hard time making it if the, and the board would have to do that. But I want to go back to the crossover point. You know, what is the sense of urgency right now for us? You know, we're talking about making cuts, but are we in a situation right now where there's a sense of urgency? Are we at that point where the board really has to be alarmed right now? That's the first thing. And the second thing is if you're going to start, is there any area, if you want to look for a low-hanging fruit, is there any area in our city that we are over-servicing right now? That we would, we would cut because we're over-servicing? And I'm, rather rhetorical question. I, I don't know that we have any areas that we are really over-servicing. I think there's a lot of areas that we're doing a fantastic job, but I don't know that, that we're over-servicing, that there is really a lot of obvious dollars that we could probably cut back. We would be affecting level of service in an area right now if we made cutbacks. And so again, we need to make that decision immediately if we don't have the money to pay for it. But the question is, do we have a solid financial plan in place right now? Is the crossover point out in a fair, uh, time that we don't need to make immediate decisions? We keep on this fiscally responsible path that we're on right now? So I'm asking, I, I'd like to kind of get an idea from my fellow council members, what, you know, what is the sense of urgency right now of looking at cuts?
Romero was next.
Sense of urgency is that for the last three years, Lyman's put on each of our retreats, we are structurally imbalanced and we're going to a crossover and we can only kick the can down the road so long before action needs to be taken. I think the level of service question that you asked could be phrased differently, and I think at our workshop, there was, it was well stated, where citizens said, you know, in 2011, we had 68 full-time employees. 2016, we were up to 90. 2017, we're up to almost 115. And they said, we don't sense the increased level of service for all these people. So I think that we need to gauge where has that not been right-sized? I would go back again to the questions that I had cited in January that were given to us by staff. Did staff look at any of these issues as to what happens if we cut the general fund expenditures 10%? If we cut full-time employees to 100 and we transfer dollars from the, the funds to the general fund? I think this is a good basis that was given in January, and I was wondering, did you guys do the analysis to any of these?
No, because we didn't have enough information to do that. My question to council would be, what are we doing now that you would like us not to do? We're hearing constantly from our citizens that they want more and more and more. They want faster response. They want us to expand. You know, for example, looking at the human service needs, that is not a core municipal function typically, but we're taking that on. The, our commission, again, is not a core municipal function. Public safety, fire, public works, street maintenance, parks, uh, at a, at a particular level, uh, those are all core municipal services. And we've actually, over time, expanded into other areas, but on a very, very marginal level. So, uh, you know, it, it is one of those things that we've not done. We've tried historically not to be all things to all people. For example, we don't have a senior center, and a lot of cities do that. And it, it does take a lot of money to do that. That's one of the reasons we have our contracting model where we contracted with the YMCA to provide, provide the service structure for the community center. So it's no operating loss to us on an annual basis. Most cities, when they have a community center, subsidize that going forward. The same with a performing arts center, those types of things. So from my perspective, we don't have a lot of low-hanging fruit that we could, that I would, I would say, yes, we could cut this service or cut that service, et cetera. It, it is truly a policy call on what services you would not feel that we need to provide and at a particular level of service. The other is code enforcement. We're getting more and more code enforcement impacts for people wanting faster response. You know, the trees going out and, you know, going out on a, on a moment's notice to see somebody is cutting, cutting trees, and so we have to drop things and do that. We've got one and a half people in code enforcement for 62,000 people. You know, we quite honestly are understaffed or I, I would claim the term efficiently-staffed in that regard. So it's a question that, that I have as somebody that, that tries to put together the operations. You know, we, I guess we need more input from council on what they're hearing because honestly, I think the community is conflicted in that. They want a higher levels, a high level of service, but we're hearing, you know, no new taxes, live within your means, and you, honestly, they can't have it both ways. We can't have it both ways in our, our household budgets. You know, I'd, I'd like to do that. I'd like to go on, you know, a luxury trip and I'd like to live in a bigger house, but I have, you know, I, I have certain limitations to that, so.
Well, I think Aaron put the list up here and, and we started out the right way. We're looking department by department. First, we started with fire and emergency. We had some discussion on that. We had some discussion on police, brief, albeit. We don't show where, which departments generate revenue. We know basically fire and police don't generate any revenue. And neither does the roadway overlay program, you see? So I, I think if perhaps we can go down this list and make some cogent comments and have some input from staff, that might be better than a scatter approach. You know, talking about the number of FTEs, well, there's all sorts of things. We, we annexed Kohani. We took some functions in-house which required more FTEs. We converted part-time summer help into a full-time FTE. So, uh, those are nuances, so you can't just say we'll go down to 100.
This is what staff proposed to us. And, and just as a board member, I think we should have a list of this. Doesn't mean we would do it, but they should become and say, what are the implications if we have 100 staff? Ben used to say, we go zero-budgeting every department from the bottom up what's needed. Bring us back, say, if the staff goes to 100, these are the implications of this. If we cut the general fund by 10%, these are the implications. It doesn't mean we will do it, but it gives us a basis to go from, and this is what we talked about in January.
Well, that's a good point. And instead of growing staff to bring more services in-house, we might say, okay, if you cut staff, what happens? Well, we're going to contract more then.
Exactly.
And that might cost more.
Exactly. But we at least have the ability to sit down. Right now, we're, we're running, chasing our tail.
Okay, let's go around, around the room. Start with Kathy and then go around.
Thank you. I do. I, I thank you for saying that, Don, because we have brought more people on staff. Our emergency manager, who just gave us a report, was a staff member that we brought on. But I quite agree with, with Bob that we need to take sort of a longer-term view. Certainly, Eastside Fire and Rescue, and you've talked about maybe changing the way they deliver their service model. They have some significant issues around the contracts that they have with the firefighters that doesn't enable them to go out and do some of the things we've talked about. We've talked for years about, wouldn't it make more sense in this geographically challenged community? And I'm talking about not only Samamish, but the whole EFNR Service Center, that we had EMT units stationed at various places. But at this point in time, the union contract wouldn't, wouldn't permit that. But there's certainly a growing sense of recognition that we can't continue to increase fire services, whether that's national or local and within EFNR, that there have to be some creative ways of delivering services. For example, we were laughing about in Sweden, they use drones to deliver the heart defibrillators so that anybody that, it comes down on the street where someone is having a heart attack and the instructions are there that supposedly any idiot like me would be able to follow the instructions and start to go, use the paddles in that early point in time when it is so critical that you get the heart start going and then the EMTs come on later to kind of finish the job. But that's going to take some time. It's not going to happen tomorrow, and it has to be part of the conversation. So this sense of urgency of cutting things now, I'm afraid that we would be cutting off our nose to spite our face instead of actually doing it as thoughtfully as I think if we looked at all of the services we provide and looked at how over time we could change some of those services. The police, reviewing the police contract, for example, would be one example of that.
So those are good inputs on fire, emergency, medical. Anybody else going around the horn on, on that issue?
Well, I mean, if we can delve into other issues as well, that'd be nice.
Well, I'll come back around for other issues.
You want me to just stick to?
I'd like to go down, if everybody's okay with it, go down department by department and have a discussion, any ideas for each department?
Well, I, I think we have a tendency to hear a lot more about EFNR and their expenses directly, but I'll admit that I, I don't know about police as far as their expenses directly, and I don't know if there are room for cuts there. I am cognizant of the comment of making cuts just to make cuts. I mean, I think there's a lot of information we don't even have yet, the TMP being one of them. So I, I'm, I'm hesitant to make choices on needs when we don't even know what our needs will be in advance of getting the information.
I don't think we're asking for choices now, but, but concepts to explore, to have staff explore.
Well, having a little bit more information about the police department would be at least of interest. I don't.
Sure. In fact, we can arrange a ride-along.
That I would enjoy.
Yeah, Bob?
I, I would just add a couple of things. Eastside Fire and Rescue, first off, recently, they presented some overheads with analysis of the cost of our services compared to other city fire departments, fire districts and regional fire services. And our ILA, Eastside Fire and Rescue, delivers a very cost-effective fire service. It's really astounding the differences that the chief put together. Now, I think the numbers, I think he's still flushing the numbers out a little bit more. There may be some things in there that he needs to increase, but, but it shows an incredible trend for fire services. But something that we have to look at as well, not only our own needs, but Issaquah, as we can see the growth that's going on in Issaquah, part of EFR, as they build a more urban town center out for themselves, they're going to need different equipment. While that we might be able to move a station, we need, we may need to have more certifications because of commercial requirements with the firefighters. So those costs, I don't see Eastside Fire and Rescue really going down. I actually see these increases probably going up, even with the chief being very creative in that area. I'm very pleased to know last night was a good, or Tuesday night, it was really a good report we got from the fire, excuse me, the police chief. And actually, you could look at level of service as they increased the firefighters and they increased that, you could see an improved, um, quality of number of arrests, number of cleared arrests. I mean, she was really associating her level of service with her, with her cost and number of police officers. So it'll be interesting. I think a study will be very valuable there. If I'm, if you want me to kick down just a little bit or?
Let's stay at the top two for around and then go back the other way.
Okay, so really with fire services and police, I, I think because of the growth of our city and the things that are happening right now, while we should always try to control costs there, I'm not sure there's a lot there for us to, to really find dollars in.
So one question is, are we trying to control cost or improve services?
It's a balance.
And, and the, earlier in the year, the ALS issue was brought up, so I'm not sure what the status of that is, so.
Well, I think we have good news there.
We, we do have good news on that, but that's for a later date.
Oh, okay. Well, let's keep going around. Tom?
I believe that as a, as a city, our most fundamental service are the safety of the citizens. And given the comps that we've seen, as Bob referred to from the police and what we heard, well, actually what chief gave yesterday too on the EFR, it feels as though we're doing as well as we can in that regard. So I, I think we're starting at, we can only affect 60% of the budget, not 100%. If that's four, it's roughly 40, a little bit less than 40%, but just rough numbers. So I don't think there's anything we can do there unless, unless we can be really creative, but I'd have to look to staff for that.
And like Kathy said, it might be a longer-term creativity. Tom?
Well, whatever we do on public safety is going to be a long-term solution, there's no way around that. I'd like to remind us all that, uh, a few years ago, we did take 400K a year out of the cost of the fire services when we renegotiated the cost-sharing element of the ILA at that point. If we had set up our own operation, the, the price up was a million-dollar annual saving. We basically split the baby and stayed in, which I think is the right decision, frankly, for half a million, it's not worth the pain and strain. We just signed a new, a new ILA, so unless we're ready to toss that out, and I'm not where, where we are. So the way forward here is to help the chief analyze services. Plus, keep the heat on about do we continue to modify the formula for the ILA?
The what?
The cost-sharing formula. Right now, it's, it's a combination of AV and calls for service. Population doesn't play in, nor do I, nor do other factors other agencies use. So going forward, that might be a long-term carrot we could chase. If best, it will probably help control costs rather than reducing them.
Good. Romero?
Yeah, no, I concur that we more than cutting, we're looking at cost containment with the public safety. And we've had a ramp-up in police that will soon surpass fire, but it's also because of Kohani and other areas that have come in. We have a problem fundamentally even more than COLA because there have been years where the fire department working with us took lower COLAs than our staff took, and that was.
and that was noteworthy on several years and should be recognized that they had done it. But we have in there that there are comparables that have to be paid, and that's where we start to get hit again. And so there, and I know that the board is looking at new models to try to see how can we do these cost containment. I think in other departments, you know, parks and recreation is a significant part of our general fund, always has been, we had talked about...
No, no, it's just...
Oh, I thought we were going to go down.
Well, not yet.
Oh, okay.
Are we done with police and fire?
Well, on the police side, though, we do have more control because of the numbers. And I think maybe one of the things that we should look at after this discussion is the study that we were going to look at, which was going to be bringing, should we postpone that after we have this discussion to see, hey, is it, right now, let's try to hold and cost contain that rather than look at new services that we can bring in? Because at least what we've seen is even with Kohani in, the number of incidents per thousand have stayed the same. So we have not had any rise since 2013.
Only of type one.
That's right, of type one. But type two also goes back to initiated by our police, not by what's called in. So I don't see any reason that's being pushed from external forces for that.
Okay.
Question, as I look through the police service department expenditures, it's that police service contract, and I'm not sure what's bundled into that. But from the 2013-14 budget, it increased 22% to 2015-2016. When were the new officers added for Kohani? In the 15-16 budget or the 16-17? Or sorry, 17-18?
16-17.
Okay, so the 2017 to 2018 budget increased 20%, though. So there's some pretty significant jumps in the police contract in those. And in comparison to Eastside Fire and Rescue, from 2013 to 2015, they went up 9.7%. And from the 2015-16 budget to the 2017-18 budget, it went up 12%. So significantly less than the police budget.
I think in the police, we added a traffic officer.
Is that true?
Yeah. Pressures from our citizens about traffic.
What does that mean?
Yeah.
Just trying to understand the why.
Right, yeah. And so we've gone around the horn with the council, how about staff? Any comments on fire and police?
Just to your point, Kristi, the 15-16 budget, 15 was no Kohani and 16 was with Kohani. 17-18 was two years with Kohani. So if you're going to compare two years to two years, it's not quite the same if you include 15 and 16.
Okay, let's do Public Works and Street, and we'll start, go the other way. Start with you, Ramiro.
I think we should revisit, what is it that we do, the overlays every three years or every five years that we start doing the...
Seven.
This is seven? I think we may want to look at that. The other thing that we want to look at is...
Wait, say that again.
No, actually, we don't do overlay every five, seven years. We do it every year, but it's based on pavement conditions. So Steve, do you want to chat a little bit about that, how we put that together?
Sure, you pretty much hit that on the head. It's every year, 3.5 million going through our program and looking at the condition of the roads and trying to achieve an acceptable level of degradation.
That's 70%?
70%-ish. Not everything hits right on the head, a little high, but yes. When you get below that PCI, pavement condition index...
But one thing that concerns me, and it's something that was raised at the time, for example, the road conditions, obviously, of Kohani have been neglected by King County before coming in. So there's always been a concern of a sucking of our road maintenance and overlays to Kohani at the cost of the rest of the city. And so how are we going to be able to watch that as part of this? Because it's supposed to be paying its way, and will there be possibility of asking them, hey, is there a local improvement district type of concept that could be brought in so it doesn't impact us, especially as we start to look at this to the rest of the city?
Well, I think Steve can answer that.
So yeah, just in general, there's, you know, what, 11,000-ish in Kohani, 62,000 total, one over six. So we normally do about six sites a year. One of those is Kohani since we've taken them in. So that's the programmatic way we're planning to try to balance the town geographically.
And to get on top of it, I noticed we've done some crack sealing in Kohani.
Other normalized maintenance conditions.
Which hadn't been done.
Preventative care.
Yeah.
I think I've got to follow up a little...
Steve, you got something else?
Just the 3.5 million isn't straight-up asphalt either, right? Because if you're going to do asphalt at intersections, you have to upgrade the ADA ramps at curb areas with sidewalks. So this year, just 3.5 million total, little under 700,000 was concrete and ADA ramp work. So the balance then is asphalt, as close there to as we can get it.
Well, that was the overlay part of Public Works and Street Maintenance. But there's another 5.8 million there. What's the major portion of that, Steve?
Glenn is here, too. I do know a lot of the service providers are the bulk of that service contracts, so street sweeping, vectoring, those types of services.
Does that include the media maintenance landscaping people?
Yeah, we have a couple of contracts that do that. So you have your finished landscapes that we have, like on 228th. And then we also have a contract that does like at East Lake Sam, all of the unfinished areas as well. So we're looking at, you also have part of the vectors paid out of that, part of the street sweeping is paid from the street fund. You also have certainly our current staff. We also do a number of some contracting for patching to enhance what we're doing. The crack sealing actually is a contract as well. And, you know, Steve mentioned the overlay on the cycle, but you're looking at anywhere from a 20 to 25-year cycle on where you can get a decent street. Again, a number of the roads we have have been, before we were a city, they were not cared for that well either. So we have a couple of examples this winter. You have a winter like this, our maintenance is enhanced, so that impacts specifically. Also in street maintenance, you have that snow and ice. Yeah, the snow and ice removal, which most years, you know, the previous four years was very nominal. This year, however, was not. So you have some of those unpredictable costs as well. Where, as already been mentioned, our street fund is, we've taken seasonal employees. That was not a one-for-one. We reduced the overall people numbers to get to the FTEs to make sure we had a, you know, we balanced the funds that way. So that's kind of, that's generally what's included in street maintenance. There are other things that come up. Steve mentioned the ADA ramps. We also have some small contracts to do sidewalk repairs and a number of those other items that can't fit into what our staff does on a day-to-day basis when we're not the capacity.
Thank you. Tom, did you have any further comments?
Just a follow-up to the overlay issue. Being one of the major supporters, this to begin with, my recollection from when we first discussed increasing this was the level of activity each year essentially was enough to allow the roads to be overlaid every seven or eight years. You finish everything and then you start over again. So I guess the question that could be looked at is what are the consequences of, say, going moving from seven years to eight years? What are the long-term consequences of that? That would save, you know, $500,000 a year. Maybe that's pound, penny-wise and pound-fullish, but maybe that's the kind of discussion we should have.
Well, Tom, the overlay is more like 20 or 25-year duration, right?
Can I ask the clarifying question? Did I hear that that 3.5 million was expected to pay for entire city's network overlay every seven years?
That's what I recall.
I don't think that's anywhere close.
Okay.
When we did the amortization schedule for roads, we assumed more like 20 or 25...
I would assume, not being here, a 20 to 25-year program.
Okay, well, I stand corrected then.
And the crack sealing was to make sure we can extend it to that range.
Well, crack sealing, I completely agree with. I got to go down to the Public Works Street Maintenance category. One of the things that I would like to look at is going back to Glenn's comments about the amount of maintenance in the Parkway and 220th and all that. Do we need to mow as often as we do? Do we need to weed as often as we do? And what is the savings that could occur if, for instance, we only did it half as frequently? I think that's a number the council would like to have, at least I would.
So that's easy, $390,000 is the bulk of that contract out of that number. And then remember, as we build all these new streets, they all come with these new features that then we inherit.
Well, that's another issue.
Yeah.
We're setting ourselves up for that.
What you're saying is the street landscaping maintenance is a small percentage of the whole...
Yeah, annual contract, medians, landscape strips, et cetera, the budget is 390,000.
Including mowing?
Contract for medians, landscape strips, and et cetera, adjacent to the roads with whatever areas are mode.
That's the 390?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The other factor that we want to make sure that council's aware of is that there have been court cases where we technically can be found at fault if we do not maintain site distance properly.
There was a big one in the county two years ago.
It's a huge, huge problem that we do have, and the courts have ruled that the cities are responsible for that. And if we don't do that, then we are liable if there are accidents and people are injured.
And I know Glenn can speak to this probably as much as I can. There's a voicemail in my inbox right now about turning back the blackberries and grass adjacent to the home, you know, wherever it is, those calls come all the time. So it's that level of service, right? If you want to have less, that's fine, just expect the opposite of happiness from citizens.
I'm a little bit puzzled because these are, we said earlier, these are not the net numbers. So we don't even know how much we're talking about from the general fund, how big of an impact we can make on the crossover, the revenues versus expenses on an operating basis. So I don't even know if this is worth spending time. If that 5.8 million, if 5 million is paid up from other sources, I don't care about it. So I don't know if I can really talk to it. But it'd be nice to have net numbers here out of the general fund, is my point.
Well, that's, as we go down, we'll talk about how much, like, when we get to community development, we'll hear that a significant portion of it is fees paid.
Well, and I think in the Public Works, there's some portion, I don't know, is it significant? Yeah, let's hear...
I'm just trying to tally the general fund's revenue line, so there's a few different lines, so just...
Okay, well, we'll come back and let us know when you have it then, Steve. But in general, I believe, and I want to combine the Public Works Street Maintenance and the road overlay since everybody else did. I think this is an area that we could, should look at, and I think we could do something potentially, with the caveat, we don't want to expose the city to liability, so it's a very careful, fine line. But I think there are some places that we could probably give up on the constant maintenance and save some money, is where I'm at.
Okay. Tom Odell and I, a few years ago, we drove the route that was going to be overlaid and concluded that, for example, on one route, the pavement didn't need it for the whole route. And so indeed, that's why we brought up again that we put 3.5 million aside, but we don't have to spend it.
I hope not, exactly.
And, Don, I think after we did that little survey, that was Southeast 24th, if I recall it, we looked at. And you're right that the part of it was pretty well beaten, that part of it wasn't. And I think the, even though the original plan may have been to do the whole thing, it got amended. And as Steve said, they are now doing it on condition as opposed to just using a map and going ahead and doing.
Yeah. But I would also say that that's not the role of a council member. That's, should be squarely on staff's shoulders to make those decisions versus council members going out to do it.
That's right.
We hear you.
I totally agree. Bob?
I'm going to agree with that, and then I'm going to make this comment because I was looking at things to save money in those particular areas. I don't know how this fits, and I don't know exactly how it would save money, but I know the city at one time had, I know if it was partnerships with the power companies, where that we swapped out lights, streetlights, and we saved money because they were more efficient and that sort of thing. And I'm assuming that the staff is always looking for opportunities like that. But I would like to put a caveat in there that, you know, could we be more proactive? And it's not just saving money, when we get back to level of service. We have a lot of areas in the city that are, again, rural designs, where we're asking kids to walk on the street and people to spend time out there. And after looking at the, some of the streets that I travel all the time with the eye of a parent and maybe their kids walking to school, they're dimly lit. So I'm wondering if we could actually save money somehow by upgrading some of the light systems that we have in a partnership with the power company, but deliver a better level of service by maybe even adding more lights? Just a thought, since we're in that characterization. And I also wanted to ask a question about Kohani. When you were talking about fixing the cracks, as I understood, the county caught up with some of the neglect just prior to the annexation that we had actually asked them, and they did do some of that repair work for us on the crack ceiling.
They did do some, and I'll use the word "some" in quotes.
He gave him what, 2 or 3 million to do that?
Or they got to keep it.
Yep. It was our money, we should have gotten it, we did minimal.
Okay, Kristi?
Imagine what Steve could have done with that.
I got to wait for him to finish. Okay, so I'm going to read to you something that came from the May 2012 Sammamish City Newsletter when Tom Odell was the mayor, so this is mayor's message. I'm writing to you about this because the city budgets are on $100,000 a year to repair sidewalks. And in this message, and I know this is one of Tom's pet peeves, and it's my pet peeves as well, and it ties back to enforcement, is we perpetually allow people to park and park trucks all over the sidewalks, and it causes damage. And if we simply enforced it via the police to not park on the sidewalks, all it takes is a few issued tickets, people get the message really quick, and this is a simple savings.
Good.
Could even be revenue neutral.
Kathy?
From my perspective, I don't see how we can cut the Public Works or the maintenance budget with the type of landscaping we currently have. As a matter of fact, if you listen to my husband, who whines every time we go down the street about the weeds in the, along the sidewalks and on the streets, he would have it done probably two or three times a year. So my suggestion would be, can we look at other ways of doing the plantings so that we can get, it could be more attractive and actually less expensive possibly to have them maintained? Because what we see and what we've heard complaints are is when the crews come out and they're just pulling everything out and the plants go along with the weeds, and then they're spraying some of the insect, the roundabout. And instead of applying it like Warren does on each plant and just getting the middle of the plant...
Roundup?
Roundup, they're just spraying it in general, and we've had a number of complaints about that. So other than that, I have to say, I talked to a gentleman last night, and he said exactly what I feel. He moved here from Seattle, and he's amazed at how well we do the streets. And I think the difference between walking in Seattle on a sidewalk or a street and walking on a sidewalk or a street in Sammamish is a world of difference. And I'm very proud that we have sidewalks that are not broken and we have streets that don't have huge potholes in them. So I wouldn't want to see us cutting so that we end up getting, having the same sort of situation as you have in Seattle.
Steve, do you have a number for us?
So not to overcomplicate things, the budget lines are right around 1.7 million in revenue, which would be split between, of course, community development and then parts of Public Works, general fund operations, so 1.7. It's under a handful of lines within the city budget. And then just from the recent FMR, I trust council gets those right? That is the financial update report that comes out monthly. We are at 73% year-to-date for revenue on that. So you would expect our actual amounts to come in over the estimate that is provided in the budget. So that is 700 plus 900, you're already at 1.6 over the 2, so there's, that looks different. So I guess I'm wrong. So it's 2.1 total in this format on the FMR, and we will be over that, I guess, is the bottom line.
And about half of that goes to the Public Works?
No. No, we're a much smaller amount, so just they have, you know, six planners and two review engineers. And then, of course, pieces of myself and Andrew, and, you know, everybody is in that pot. If I had to guess, we're probably 15% of the revenue. Yeah, the bulk of it is community development and building department.
Don?
Chris?
We also get street fuel tax from the state, it's about $1.3 million, goes into the street fund. Street fuel tax?
Right.
A quick comment on maintenance. I believe it was the summer of 2015 when we had a drought, and the medians, right away, we were losing plants right and left. I was the interim public works director at the time, and my phone would not stop ringing. The citizens were really upset that everything was dying, and we were scrambling to try to handwater some of the things that we could to save them, but we suffered immense loss, and there was a tremendous cost to repair all of that. On the capital side, we made a decision years ago not to put irrigation in. You know, so, and we tried to plant hardy plants that would live, and they did not. So as we're thinking about, you know, reductions in service or controlling costs, I will also just advocate, as we're doing capital projects, we need to be thinking about the construction and the design opportunities here as well. In this park, for example, we made a decision two years ago, plant grass everywhere. It has to be mowed, and it has to be irrigated. We could turn the irrigation off, that would save something like $30,000 in the summer. The grass would be brown. Is that, you know, these are, these are level of service standards discussions, which we're happy to have. My experience has been, our citizens have a very high expectation for our maintenance standards, and we've been trying with, you know, at times limited resources to meet those, and it's tricky, so anyway.
Well, that's true, because we tried chip sealing in Tree Farm, and that neighborhood did not appreciate it. Is that what you were going to say, Glenn?
No, I kind of wanted to highlight a little bit about the contracting also. So we have evolved into kind of a mixed-service city, so we have a lot of contracts and we have some response for sure. But one of the trends that's happening, particularly in maintenance, is the quality of the contractors have started to go down. The volume of them has also gone down. They're also having challenges like everyone else, getting qualified people to work for them. So the challenge is getting them, getting the value out of the dollar that you have. Now, it used to be pretty easy to do, but now they're not as hungry and they're not as good. And there aren't as many of them, the downturn really cleaned contractors out, particularly in our field. So that has been a real challenge for us, to get the level of service that the contract speaks to, let alone getting, you know, a number of bids to be able to keep the costs down. So that's just an industry trend.
Glenn, I've got a question for you, though. Back when I was in high school and first couple of years of college, I spent several summers working on the grounds maintenance crew at the General Mills Research Headquarters in Minneapolis. This sounds to me like if you're having these kinds of problems, a good opportunity for employing a few more of our local youth in this kind of thing. My son used to mow lawns for Lake Washington Schools. And frankly, given the fact that summer employment for youth is becoming more and more problematic, that might be a solution.
It's something that we've looked at, that's also a trend. The youth are not looking for the work that we're serving. Now, we have a number of them on our staff, we actually have a couple that we've hired full-time who started that way. Frankly, that's the way I started in this business as well. So that's something that we've got to work on as a business, to make sure that we're recruiting, being able to start recruiting those people, not, you know, into our fields and coming to see what we do and getting involved in our local government, because that's how they can get educated.
I was thinking more of using the summer hires to augment the crew, because most of the maintenance work does occur between now and the fall.
It does, and the mowing piece is a big, can be a big part of that. One of our challenges is all of the regulations that go with temporary employees, but also the, we do not want to put them in danger. And they don't have the experience to be put out in the streets. Now, the mowing and the parks, we're currently using six. But I will tell you, those six people that we've had, we have now gone through nine, and they're four-month seasonals. So we're looking for our ninth person. And so that's a challenge for us, but we will continue to work that angle and try to recruit people and find new ways to do that, for sure.
I would certainly happen to have the job and the money.
Okay, any other comments on public works, street maintenance, or roadway overlay program? We did get an email or two about the loudness, Steve, on Sahali Way. And I remember on 520, 520, the state tried some of that silent pavement. And I think for 520, they concluded it didn't hold up well enough. So could you just briefly comment on the quiet pavement overlay versus regular?
Not a whole lot, but I believe they had a couple of test sections, 520 area, and then over on I-90, actually east. I don't know the dollar cost, I had heard it was a little higher on a application rate, per square yard, tonnage, however you look at it. And then longevity, I think it ended up wearing at some point, may have been quieter in the beginning, but then just seemed to get louder too. But new pavement normally, I think I saw an email from Tom the other day, you know, somebody was complaining about road noise, and he's like, hey, when it was new, it's sure quiet. And as it ages, it gets louder. And it's just, you know, the fines disappearing and you're running on, you know, more angular material, so.
Right, well, the other thing that we have a lot of here are studded tires.
Yes.
And as soon as people run those for even half a season, it changes the whole dynamics of the roadway.
So we should keep the pressure on the legislature to outlaw the studded tires?
Yeah.
I feel.
I agree.
Okay, should we go to the next category, parks and rec? 5.1 million, let's start with Kathy on this side.
And I'm not sure where this fits, if it's right under parks and rec. One of the things that we talked about at the finance committee was getting a list of our facilities and properties that we own and determine which ones could be liquidated or are up for liquidation. So for example, in our central Washington budget, our plan is, our hope is, that we will eventually sell that. And bringing that into the conversation, we know that the lease is up on the Boys and Girls Club in two years. Over the years, we've talked about whether that building, which is not very functional as a club, would be saleable. And are there other little pieces of property in the city that might be available to sell that are costing us perhaps money at this point to maintain or deal with? So I'd like to look at that as part of what I'd like to see in parks and rec. But aside from that, all I hear, and especially from some of the new people, when I was outside yesterday, is those people at the southernmost part of the city and the northernmost part of the city don't know where the parks are for their little children. And they were kind of asking, as other people came up, what parks do you use? Where can I take the children? Because there aren't any parks real close to me. So the demand seems to be for more parks rather than less.
If I could just clarify about facilities, all of the buildings in the city, including the Beaver Lake Lodge, are in the facilities department, not parks and recreation. So the maintenance, any maintenance costs we have on the Boys and Girls Club, Morris Hill, City Hall, it's in that lower line on facilities. Parks maintains, picnic shelters, restroom buildings, yeah. Just for clarification.
Thank you very much.
Kristy?
So I have a couple of questions as it pertains to parks and recs. Again, kind of the same thing that we talked about with public works, are there revenues generated by the department? And if so, what are they? I assume some of the fees to use the facilities offset this, and what's that look like?
We have the rental facility program that we have.
I missed you down there, I'm so sorry. I was looking at Jessie, because I didn't think you were here.
Hello, I'm Jessie too, yeah. Yeah, so revenues based on facilities such as the lodge and the shelters and the fields are nearly half a million dollars a year.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then what are the major expenditures that you have out of that 5.1 million dollars?
Bulk of that is actually on the, sorry Glenn, he just left, but maintenance side, actually. Both the contract and the employees that we have that maintain our park system. So that gets into the level of service within our parks and how the city is determined what level of service that they want to have for mowing, for maintenance and prep of ball fields, of the facilities, the amenities that we have, the landscape beds, how often do we weed, you know, how often do we take care of the landscape beds? And kind of that appearance and general upkeep of the parks, as well as small capital projects. So playgrounds and maintaining those and inspecting those, and like the restrooms, you know, repairs of those, and then regular maintenance of those as well.
Park maintenance is about half of the parks and recreation department budget.
Okay, so just a comment, it's something I noticed, is that we recently reseeded at Big Rock Park, which happened when we originally opened the park, and that wasn't apparently successful, and we're reseeding again. Is our maintenance sufficient so that we're not having that expenditure to be reseeding areas, or what happened there?
My understanding, my thought on that, I wasn't here, obviously, when the project was first installed, and Jessie can back me up on this, but there was, I don't believe any irrigation on that and the timing of the year that things were seeded, and it was a very hot, dry summer. The last two years have been very challenging for plant material. And so I think that was a way to, it didn't set very well the first time, so this is a chance to get that back to where it needs to be.
And irrigation was obviously added, because as I drove by today, sprinklers were on.
Right, so the irrigation will help with that. And I don't believe, the reseeding of that park is not a regular maintenance procedure we should be doing. That was just to take care of a deficiency of the original installation.
Okay, Bob?
Okay, the first thing I would ask, actually, in Big Rock Park, the house that there, that is there, that's doing nothing, at this point, is that in the facilities? That would be there as well? It's not listed in the parks?
No, and it's in what I call mothball status, so we keep the heat on and at low, and we check the building regularly to make sure the roof's not leaking, we clean the roof. I couldn't tell you right off the top of my head what the cost is, but it's fairly minimal.
Okay, the other area I would just comment on is, we found that our partnership, since we focus on these, and I think we really should expand partnerships when we can, the schools were an excellent reflection of how we were successful over the years, partnering with the fields and the turf and that sort of thing. But we also found, I think, with the recent negotiations, that sometimes the partnerships have an expiration date or a revision date of maybe what was originally put into that agreement with the maintenance and that, on the fields that we experienced, with the athletic fields that we, maybe that's something that we could continue to do. I'm sure that the staff is doing that, but when we look at the existing partnerships, maybe we should be reviewing how that agreement is structured in terms of maintenance and such. But I would encourage that we continue to look for those opportunities, because we have seen success as well.
You know, this might be a good opportunity for Glenn to comment on the maintenance contracts part of parks. We have actually found, for example, the synthetic turf on the sports fields is maintained by contract. As of late, we have found that it may actually be more costly to be contracting for that service, because we're having to enhance the service. So we are doing, we've undertaken a process to evaluate all of our contracts, because we think there are a few that have turned the corner, and it would be more efficient to bring the work in-house. Do you want to speak to that?
Sure, we have currently 20 active contracts to provide maintenance. About half of them roughly are in the parks. And kind of overall, that's exactly what we're finding. We're finding that they're, that we haven't scoped them, the scopes haven't really changed in a number of years. Like I mentioned earlier, we have, we have new people in the business, or they're not as experienced, so we need to be a little more specific about what we're telling them. So we're currently undergoing, evaluating all of them for three main things, scope, make versus buy, is it cheaper for us to do an in-house or not? And if it isn't, that's fine, but we also want to be able to review them on a, every, we do most of our contracts on a three-year turnaround. So every time we re-up, we want to be able to reevaluate them for make versus buy. And then, and then we're looking at conditions of the contract, is the third piece. What are the things that they should be doing, that they're not, that aren't specified? Or what are some of the things they really shouldn't be doing and are too costly? And we could be able to do it, or we choose not to do it all, so those are the things we're looking at.
One point I wanted to make as it relates to park programs, we essentially, we really do run a bare bones parks program in that we do not provide recreational opportunities that most other cities do provide. We actually encourage and work with other partners in doing that, as well as people that do that for a business. In most cities, there's probably, let's say, a 25% return on those rec programs that they run. I know there are some, I've heard from folks that they would like us to run those programs, but usually they are not cost-effective, so I just thought I'd toss that out. Angie, any comments on that front?
No, I think you highlighted that, but day camps, sports camps, youth sports programs, adult sports programs, senior programs, we don't provide those directly, and a lot of cities actually do, so we are pretty bare bones as it is.
Actually, just yesterday, I got a comment on that. We don't provide them, but maybe we should be really working on encouraging some of them, especially for the younger children. I know once you get to sports leagues, there's pretty good programs, but for the younger kids, there's a paucity of programs. I wanted to follow up on Bob's point about the house in Big Rock Park, actually, it's the houses in Big Rock Park. And I assume in the pro-plan, we're going to address that, okay. Another comment I got recently was that the northeast sector, and we had talked about this years ago, that there isn't, there's a need for a park in the northeast sector of the city. We've explored areas right outside the city as possibilities, and it's still there, it's still a need. You think, well, we got Soaring Eagle Park, well, that's a park, but that's simply trails and nature, it's not play areas. And a lot of the play areas you see are play areas that are homeowner association play areas, and they're not general public play areas. So we should continue to have the northeast sector on our landscape for finding a way to put a park up in there. That's my input at this point. Oh, one other thing, cost laminated root rot is something that we're going to see, possibly see as an ongoing cost, and perhaps an increasing cost in the future, so just to beware on that. Tom?
So just to clarify, though, new parks should come under capital, not operating, right?
Yeah, that's true.
So, okay.
The first part, yeah.
Well, in that regard, am I thinking correctly, about half of the 5.1 million is maintenance, ongoing maintenance? What's the other half? Is that the small capital?
No, the other half is basically the, kind of the recreation and park planning side of the house, so.
Oh, the actual overhead.
Right, so the rest of the department, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Your events, your arts commission is in here, your volunteer program, that's about 400,000. Our lifeguard program that we provide at Pine Lake Park, our co-sponsored events, like Farmer's Market Nightmare at Beaver Lake Park, Mud Run, those types of partnerships, yeah.
Okay, so I guess I'll stand by my earlier comment, that I think there might be a way of looking at reducing the costs on the maintenance side of things. I mean, I just think it's a standard of service that we could probably get by with a little bit less. I mean, I think we've all gone through it on our household budgets, it's like, hey, I can't afford, you know, $100 a week for mowing the yard or whatever it is. So you take a little bit less, so I think that, and I guess, takeaway I'm thinking of, we're asking you as staff to look at that and see where there might be something that you can tighten your belt on. And if not, if we get to a crisis mode, and to answer your earlier question, I don't think we're in a crisis mode, but I think it's nice that we're looking ahead now. But if you can't tighten your belt, then we may- But if you can't tighten your belt, then we may have to say, you have to tighten your belt and then you're going to have to come up with something and maybe do it across the board, which is always never a good way of doing it frankly. But that's kind of what my mind is of what we're thinking about and what we're talking about, so.
May I ask a clarification? Is, if we're looking at maintenance reductions, I, my assumption is we're bringing forth maintenance reductions and an explanation as the impact on level of service, right? So I was using irrigation as an example, that's, that's what you'd be looking for?
Yeah, as, as to what the impact would be for this reduction.
For mowing twice somewhere, we talk about mowing once, or for mowing once a month, we talk about mowing, that type of thing and...
And we know the impact is a lot more concerned citizens voicing their displeasure, but I think that's something we decide as policy if we're willing to live with that.
Maintenance is very visible.
Yep.
A good example of that is Pine Lake Park, I walk that every morning and it's, it's wonderful, you know, they, they empty the garbage cans before they overflow. They street sweep, I think more often than is necessary, so maybe there's a, maybe can loosen up a little bit on the maintenance there and still have a very fine park. Tom?
I want to applaud Glenn for the make buy comments he made, I'm fully supportive of that. I think every department in the city should be going through that process. I've been assuming it's been happening, but if it hasn't been happening, it should be.
It has.
The, with regard to a couple of things, first of all, community programming of parks, I grew up in Edina, Minnesota, moved away, then moved back there for 10 years before I came out here. And when my kids were young, there were summer programs available in each of the local neighborhood parks so that people didn't have to drive, their kids there, they walked in there. So it doesn't take much, it takes a couple of high school kids to run a summer programming for kindergartners and first graders. And I think this is something that could be an asset and contribution to the community. With regard to the lack of parks like the Northeast Park that Donna was just talking about, what comes to my mind, and this gets into community development issues as well, is Heritage Hills where I live has a neighborhood park and trail system, which was planted by the developer and it was a big development in two phases. But aside from having a basketball court and a tennis court, there's also this big field out there that, that in the summer is a soccer field and fall is a football field. But what most people don't realize is it's also part of the stormwater system. And it's being used for collecting all runoff and detentioning, it functions as a detention pond to meter this stuff out to Evans Creek. So things like this that can be put into play too. But rather than big parks centralized, I know we've got a lot of those, one of the things I think we should be looking at is working with developers and then HOAs in some way to take advantage of this type of thing. Not necessarily cost reduction, but it's improvement in service.
Okay, Mary?
Yes, thank you. Well, first of all, I enjoy our parks homes every single day as does my dog and so I appreciate what's going on, I know it's a real benefit of the quality of life. I am a little concerned that in each of these exercises, as we're going through them, we're all saying, hey, we're doing bare bones, we're doing as much as we can, because at some point, then it's going to turn to a different exercise here. Parks, I think we have several issues that have been mentioned over years. First of all, the usage of parks going to the level of services and trying to adjust that and the type of parks, so it's not just reducing it from once a month to once every six weeks, it's where do our citizens go? So Pine Lake is heavily used, I've noticed Ebrock Creek has increased in its usage out there to try to do an adjustment. Additionally, our city has been criticized by its citizens for gold plating projects and that's something I think we have to reanalyze because there's been letter to the editors to that for years and I think we need to adjust that the cost, I know for the Sammamish Landing bathroom was criticized heavily, you could say it's because of the sewage. The amount of the master plans have been criticized, Nancy Whitten for at least seven years has been criticizing the master plans that have come out for our parks and how despite our best intentions, we seem to go to it. If we, and if we go to the Big Rock Park, Big Rock Park, its master plan, it fully funded, if I'm not mistaken, was somewhere around 4.2 million and the maintenance was about 420,000 a year. So I think how we design parks going forward is also something that needs to be looked at and considered, that we have to start scaling back into that exercise. So that's something that I would recommend for the Parks Department. And finally, going back to my earlier point, the tone of this conversation that we're having will change tomorrow once the Senate starts to announce their new taxes. So tomorrow, I think we would have a very different tone than we have today and going forward as all the other ones go forward. So it behooves us to start looking more closely because I will still go back and at the end ask, that we ask the staff to come back with those considerations of what happened so we can analyze as a board, cuts that need to be done so that we can take that decision if they needed, what are the implications? Thank you.
Okay, good. Any other closing comments on Parks and Rec? No? Well, actually it's 4:30 and, or just about and pizza is ready. Maybe it's a good time to take a break. And then we'll come back to community development and the other, boy, there's Council City Manager, that's where we'll save money.
Okay.
Okay.
I believe pizza's in the executive briefing room.
So we just finished Parks and Rec, so we're at community development and let's go around the room again. Mary, let's start with you.
On community development, with all the issues that we have, I'm hesitant to mention anything that'd be cut personally, and I think that there's more that they can do to publicize what they're doing, but I can't think of the cuts because we obviously want compliance to be taking place there.
Oh, Mike's not in?
Houston, Houston, okay?
Are you talking about community development?
Sorry?
Are you talking about community development or code enforcement?
I'm talking about community development, that's what was called out for us. And so while compliance is under, that's something that's very important, so I can't think offhand something that I could target with them to say that readily comes to mind and we've been augmenting that staff here.
This is one department where revenue's pretty, pretty well cover the expenses, don't they?
Yeah, the permitting fees, that's right.
Well, a number of thoughts here. We, I suppose could look at the fee structure that we're charging as a possible source, but I think we've done that recently, like we could go back and look again. The, the other thoughts I've had here is I think that given all the activity, if anything, this department is still undermanned. I had unsolicited input as recently as last evening at a social event I attended, that city staff is basically still too thin in certain areas and this is one of them. And that a lot of the staff that is present is operating under some degree of stress because of the demands and workload. At the same time, we're having issues with code violations that do require retention. And I know that we've launched people to go look after at tree removal operations, whether or not they're legitimate or not. We've had sign issues recently, just this past weekend, we had a major sign sweep and frankly, that's something that takes time, takes people and in the case of both of these, it's a 20, it's a seven day a week issue. We can't take the weekends off because that's when a lot of stuff happens. I'm not sure what can be done in terms of headcount. I do think that as I said in my earlier comments, we do have an opportunity to look at some of the development regs and the knock-on impact on other aspects of our expense structure to with the comment I made about the Heritage Hills combined stormwater recreation facility. The trails, they're part of that also provide community amenity from the standpoint, if it's in with our non-motorized plan and objective, it also provides spaces for trees to grow. And these are things I think we need to work on, again, as long-term. But I do see a carrot out there from the standpoint that if we have HOAs that, well, developers and then HOAs that own and operate storm, dual-use stormwater facilities, that simply takes a lot of pressure off the city to deal with the stormwater issue another way.
Okay, if this is pretty much a net zero amount from the general fund, I'm not sure it's, a whole lot of time needs to be spent on this item. Having said that, this is one area I think that could probably be used beef. I think this is a very forward-facing with the citizens that I think they see what the impact is, that we could almost use more, more help frankly.
Okay, well, I'm going to pass to Bob.
This, again, because some of it is neutral revenue or, you know, it's cost-supporting departments in many cases, you know, we just recently added an FTE there and really adding that FTE is really going to generate revenue as well, so compensating revenue. So I, I don't know that there's a lot of savings there, but I do want to tell you in, in this particular area, I, I'm, I'm wondering if we can add in, in some areas where, and this is more related to, I think, the council in some respect, but more involvement with the, our neighbors and other municipalities. We had the meeting with the school districts, needs to make sure that we have time for them to actually meet with the school district so that they can, they can plan together and hopefully save us some money with, busing was one of the subjects. The neighboring cities, you know, we have a lot of development going on in Redmond where we can, need to be corresponding and I think that takes staff time to be able to visit and, and meet staff to staff with our neighboring cities. And then also really the state, I mean, 202 is a state issue that we really need our staff to have the time to really do some of the work that would actually deliver some services that we're all, that are very important to us, that I, I think we don't see, the citizens don't necessarily see, residents see that work, but something that we could spend some more money in. Getting to the departments, we're asking for more things, the tree policy, we're asking for more policing of not only trees that are being cut down, but we want the receiving sites to be developed and that sort of thing. So I, I'm not, I'm not seeing a lot of areas where we could save money. This is an area where we'd like to increase the level of service, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I would tend to agree with it, if it's a revenue-neutral department, we don't have to spend a ton of time on it, but I did have a thought regarding the staff that we do have and the time that they spend, which I don't have a handle on, with regards to our citizens or residents calling in, whether it's about, you know, a tree, my neighbor cut down a tree, do they have a permit? Or neighborhood meetings or stuff in, in advance of neighborhood meetings that is a diversion of staff time away from things that they might otherwise be doing because they're dealing with questions coming in from the public and are there efficiencies to be had in that regard? If, if the tree permits were online with our GIS and someone could just go there and look instead of making a phone call, would that make our staff more efficient? I've, I've talked about the neighborhood meetings before and I'm curious, I know when we originally talked about that, we actually talked about having someone from staff be present there and they were reticent to do that based on, on time constraints, but I'm curious as to how much time they then spend talking to residents who have concerns about applications. So again, I'm just looking for efficiencies that might free up some of their time if answers were more readily available in another method, whether that's a GIS tool or something of that nature.
Good, Kathy?
I have the same sort of comments because I think over the years, the most common complaint I've received until recently on traffic has been, it takes so long to get a permit, it's so expensive to get a permit. You know, I've heard that just this weekend, someone who's been trying to put in an additional sort of a garage to put his model car in and it has been eight months in process and it's up to $12,000 and there's no end in sight of when that permit is going to come or if there's more money going to be asked for that permit. If the department that I believe is understaffed, because most of the complaints that have been sent to me by the community are complaints that have been picked up and they see some major things going on and they've asked if, you know, you can go do something about it, talk to somebody about it, get it set up at a priority level. They are, you know, it is a revenue-neutral, but I do think that because it is so public-facing, because the public has a direct, is having, is receiving a direct impact on it, that we need to have more time as well as, and Christie, I think you and I have both talked to the staff about saving these little, tiny little neighborhood network connections. That means that they have to sit down and talk to each other when a development comes in and see if that exists and how they can go about saving it. That takes time and I don't think the staff has really the appropriate amount of time that I would like to see them have in order to address some of these issues.
Christie made a good point about the GIS data online. Our map, Lyman gave a talk down at Association Washington Cities regarding our, our construction activity map and working in the GIS consortium. And I think that's, that's trending in the right direction, get away from having to stop and read the blue signs and find it on the map. Now, is that a mobile app also? I didn't know, can you get it on your? You can? Okay, good. Yeah, so there's a, there's a place where we can save interaction with the, the employees if, if it's all available online, so that's going in the right...
On the other hand, more people might be able to read those signs and then there's more interaction with the staff that they're complaining.
Well, we'll have, we'll have to see how that, how that develops, but we are, we are planning on continuing to develop that tool and, as we go forward.
And, and while we're continuing to develop, I think it, it's worthwhile to continue to push out that information that it's there, just putting it out once that we have GIS, you capture a small audience, you have to keep putting it out there, so you capture a broader, broader audience, which will, you know, in turn divert people to go to the website first to obtain information, which may prevent the phone call that may have been answered online.
Thought.
And you said by taking the electrical inspection in-house, we, we save coordination for, for homeowners?
Right, and, yeah, we save coordination issues as well as basically improve their level of service that they were expecting and desiring.
Okay, anything else on community development? Okay, well, we did roadway overlay, so we're down to administrative services or didn't we do roadway? Steve?
Confirming, if you don't mind, so we have 204 miles of roadway in the city, that's total miles, so multiply that by two if you want center lane miles. I said that backwards, center lane miles is 204, double that if you want to know each lane. This year's bid provided just under seven miles of overlay. So if you do the math on 204 divided by seven, you're on a 25-plus year program.
Good. Well, we're, we're on top of it whereas most cities are not and certainly King County isn't.
Yeah, way ahead.
It's been less than a year.
Well, sorry. Okay, administrative services, legal facilities, let's start with Kathy.
I think everybody would be more, would be happier because it not only is costly, but it just actually is a suck for the staff time and the amount of time and energy we put into some of these appeals is just amazing to me and we generally win, so it's not like, like we're doing things inappropriately. like, like we're doing things inappropriately. And then I'll just go back to the facilities again and would really like to drill down on the facility, see what we have. We've talked about the houses in the park, we've talked about some, whether Central Washington, whether we, you know, should be contemplating that in our conversation about some money that's coming in down the road that's going to help fill some of these gaps, and particularly the old library, which is a building that will be coming off lease in two years. What are we going to do with that? And so, and I know that we have some properties also available in the city and maybe begin to really look at what we can have and what we can possibly sell or change to some other, some other use or repurpose it in some way.
Well, Christie?
So I did want to get at least a little bit of clarification for the public as well. You know, when I look at the city attorney and the litigation piece specifically, we had a 172% increase from the 2015-16 budget to the 2017-2018 budget. So there's a significant litigation piece to that. I think we know a big one of them that's going on currently, but I do want to ask, what is driving litigation? And is it external to the city, like the county, or is it internal?
Most of it, most of it's internal and is related to development activity.
Okay, and are those based on variations that the city has granted to developers? Is that?
They're just based on, it's a wide brush, everything, everything under the sun. Whenever there's development going on, people will litigate because they want that ability to get the best, most use out of that. So it could be that we denied a variation that they were requesting, and then they will appeal that.
Developer will appeal it.
Developer will appeal that. And then we'll also have homeowners or citizens that will also file and appeal a particular project because they don't like it, don't want it, that type of thing. And so we get it from both sides, but it is, it is costly. One of, one of the things that I have had discussion with the city attorney, or not city attorney, city clerk about, related to appeals and things like that, I'm trying to remember what the, what the dollar threshold is, and that was a conscious choice to keep it low enough so that our citizens would not have to spend a lot of money to file an appeal, but it may be an opportunity to look at that cost and basically say, you know, is it, is it low, is it too low? And can people appeal, you know, on a regular basis without much skin in the game, as it were? So that is, that is something that the city clerk has brought up.
Is it $250 to file an appeal?
Think so. But then, but then our costs are not covered in any way, shape, or form.
It's the start.
It's just the start.
No, trust me, I understand firsthand.
Right, right. So just, just an aside.
And maybe if I could add, it's not just the legal, the litigation expenses are not just variances and things that are going to the hearing examiner, it's a whole array of cases. I believe we had 24, 25, 26 cases for which there was activity last year, and that includes anything from some of like litigation we have against contractors that may not be following through on service. It was some enforcement of the tree regulations, the waste management case that would have been in there. So it's definitely related to development activities, but it's also important to note that there are, there are other types of litigation that are going on in there, and some of them were getting revenue on. So for example, with waste management, we were awarded court fees. Those revenues aren't shown in this line. The other thing I guess I would point out in terms of the increase is we have underbudgeted this account line for the three years that I have been here, and we made an attempt this year to correct that by doing some straightlining, and basically we're seeing an upward trajectory. And at what point will that upward trajectory stabilize? We may be at that point, and it may be that the amount that's budgeted here for this year is too aggressive. I don't want to say that for sure at this point, but we spent 509,000 in 2015, 200, 510,000 in 2016, but the trajectory halfway last year was looking like we were going to go approach the 700,000 mark. So that's, it's trying to, to gauge what that, what that upward trend is. And so the increase that you're seeing is trying to, I think there was 250 budgeted in previous years. So, I mean, it was not a realistic budget number, so we're trying to true that up.
I guess it would, it would be helpful to see kind of those buckets that are a part of this $1.6 million for litigation, because if there's something in that that we can identify, that we could do something corrective on our end to prevent the litigation, I think that's where I was going.
So, so that $1.6 million is not all litigation? The amount of that line that's budgeted for litigation is 835,000. Basic city attorney work is 223,000, and the rest of that is public defense, prosecuting attorney, and our court costs. Court costs are being offset by revenues. You'll recall particularly the work we did on the dismissed trip, traffic tickets, got that subsidy down to 14,000. So this $1.6 million you're seeing is offset by some revenue. I will say, though, that we are seeing an upward trajectory on our public, on our caseload trends going through the court that's going to put some pressure on it. And I do track the, the litigation by case type, so if there's ever an interest in slicing and dicing that data, you know, that's something that could be provided.
Bob?
Really, just a quick follow-up on the enforcement of the tree retention policy. While I'm not sure that that took a lot of litigation time, when you were talking about offsetting with the criminal case, when there is a fine that is assessed, does that not offset the, the legal, do they, do you not connect it at all when something happens like that?
Well, it's shown on a revenue line, it's shown in a revenue line, so, you know, similar, I think it was Councilmember Hornish that said, you know, you can't see that what the general fund impact is, that some of this is offset and it's not a direct general fund cost.
Great. That's really it.
Okay, I had just a comment, and that's about the Public Records Act. The legislature this year did finally take a small step towards the unreasonable public records, the abuse of it. I think as a city, correct me if I'm mistaken, but we haven't been abused like some cities have. There was the one that came in that wanted to see all the records in the history of the city, and we responded in part, and then there was no follow-up, was there?
The, the individual rescinded that request.
Ah, good. So.
So, yes, so the legislature did pass legislation that allows cities to recoup costs. One of the challenges with the way that, the mechanism for doing that seems a little bit cumbersome. It's based on gigabytes of data, and the question is, how do you track that when you're providing the records to the individual? It's also a nominal fee, so if you're looking, and again, this goes back to litigation costs, the cost, so you've got the cost of the city clerk's office, and you'll recall, we actually added a position this year to help with that, and I've got actually the year-to-date total of, as of today, we've had 475 public records this year, and we've had 90 for the month of June, which is the highest we've had of any month this year, just to give you some data and to ground it. But the amount that they allow us to charge for these gigabytes or whatever it is, it, you know, it's only going to be a fraction of the cost, so we've got the cost of the clerk's office processing those public records requests for which we have now added another position to help with that burden. In addition, our base city attorney contract cost provides for them to do the review, the legal review, and when I last looked at the data, I actually didn't look at it before I came in here, I think we're up to like, he separates it out for us so we could see. It's like the equivalent of like $12,000 this year just to review public records. So we certainly could recoup some revenue, but don't anticipate it being anywhere near compensating for our costs, and then the question becomes, you know, is it realistic? You know, how cumbersome is it to do those charges? I'll also point out that the legislation is requiring us to do some tracking this year that we haven't had to do before, and we're required to report back, I believe it's next July, on, on quantities and, and staff time and things of that nature.
Okay, thank you. Tom?
Okay, real quick, admin services, I think there might be, but I have a feeling we're pretty tight on that and running pretty efficient, just from what I, what I know. Facilities, I too would like to see a list of facilities that we own that aren't really facilities, but are city-owned for other reasons. I've been pretty clear that I don't think government should be in the business of real estate development, real estate ownership. We're here to provide services for the citizens, but you need some infrastructure, you need some facilities, but I'd like to see that space from an operational point of view of what it's costing us to maintain some of that ownership of real estate. On the legal side, I hesitate to say this, but I'm going to say it. I wonder if you couldn't save some money by having somebody in-house. You wouldn't have to have the flat rate with an outside firm, although I think we've got a very favorable rate. We've got a lot of institutional knowledge with the current firm. However, that Kenyon Deason is also our litigation firm, and on top of their flat rate, they have, they get paid to do litigation. And I know they're not intentionally thinking this, but the fact that they get paid to do litigation, their opinions that they give to you might be different than some, if somebody in-house that doesn't have an interest to do, do the litigation. When you're going through the community development and some of the real hard calls, that in-house person might take a little bit different view if he's not going to be making more money by doing the litigation. Again, I don't think Kenyon Deason's doing that on purpose and thoughtful, but it is an inherent conflict by getting advice from somebody that is going to do the litigation.
Following up on that, if the cities of Snoqualmie and Mercer Island can afford an in-house attorney, then maybe we should be looking at that, too. In fact, Kenyon Deason provided the individuals that went to both places. So it's a good training ground, I guess. The, with respect to admin services, I'm not sure there's much to be gotten out of that rock. If anything, admin services might be a little light in terms of FTEs, given all that's going on. The, the facilities, I fully agree that I would like to see a list of all city facilities, and let me just rephrase that, all city properties, not just facilities, and the cost, the annual cost to maintain and operate each of these, so that we can, as a council, have an informed discussion of whether or not we do want to keep these on or not. I disagree with Mr. Hornish that the city shouldn't be in the real estate business. We have actually done pretty darn well in the real estate business at some point, and we've used it to achieve a number of objectives for the city. So I'll stop with that.
Would you exclude stormwater ponds from that list? I mean, we have the list already of stormwater ponds, don't we?
We have a list of everything.
Oh, we have the list of everything.
If we have it, we might as well look at it.
Sure.
I'd like to see the list of facilities as well, excluding stormwater ponds. They don't excite me as much, nor can we do much with them. I concur with Councilmember Hornish that we should not be in the real estate business. I can show you a lot of developers who also tried that and went broke. That's not a core function of ours, and it hasn't worked out well in the past for most that tried to do. You can win here or there, but I know day traders that also do that and have lost their shirt, so I would be against that. On the legal side, I also concur that we should analyze about bringing it in-house to the point that was raised earlier, the Mercer Island attorney was our backup attorney that went to Mercer Island, so if they can do it, and one-third of our population, they have one-third of our population, Snoqualmie even less. I think that it behooves us to look at what that is, and I do think we need to be able to avoid the appearance of a conflict of interest when it comes to the litigation, so I think that would behoove us. As far as the litigation, I understand that a lot of the litigation costs also come during the time of growth, and so we have a lot of development, and at least if you look at the bond market, they're, they're predicting the growth not to be happening here. So we may have that start to cut on the downside, start to have the market slow down, so, but we should analyze how much are those costs and how can we be more efficient. And then the final way that we could save money in that is I know people want to throw Seattle out at King County, but can we secede from King County and save some money out of this? Thanks.
Don, one follow-up thing, just a request, I would like to see a, a review of all the tax-exempt properties in the city. What percentage of the AV is tax exempt?
Meaning churches and government buildings?
Anything.
But is there anything actionable that we can do on that?
Maybe not, other than perhaps a, a fee situation, fee for service.
Oh, we can go to the federal, get federal acts changing, changing the federal law.
Well, you mean go ask Riker and Cantwell? Well, good luck.
Don?
Don, can I, can I talk about facilities?
Sure, absolutely.
So I have some thoughts for you on facilities. I, I don't know that we could take a, easily a 10% cut, but this is an area, as with all of maintenance, we're really looking at how to control costs. Your facilities budget is about 1.1 million a year, 25% of that budget is utility costs on all of our buildings. Councilmember Keller mentioned earlier, you know, lighting upgrades. When this building was built, although it's a lead building, many of our light fixtures are quite old and costly. We're looking at capital projects, things that are costing us a lot of money to maintain and need to be replaced. So coming up in the first quarter of next year will be the development of a facilities capital plan. It will be our first ever, and we're starting to look at these, these items that are costing a lot of money to maintain, replacing them, upgrading, environment, energy-efficient upgrades we might do, the payoff rate. So this is an area that is being looked at, and utilities actually applies to parks as well, so I wanted to mention that.
Okay, next is very important, council, city manager, finance. Start with Romero, or do you want to start with something?
Well, I was just going to say that the finance is about half of that number, so the 2.1 million, we're a million of it. That's four FTEs and myself. So these are the functions of payroll, a lot of it's mandatory functions, so you have reporting in there, you have payroll, so it would be a cost of not auditing, not doing centralized payment processing systems, all your contract and bidding policies, a lot of that are all in the, in the finance arena. We also have contracts, such as the state auditor's contract, that is a requirement that cities pay for. So although that's hitting the finance budget, it's something that's a mandate from the state for us to pay for the state auditors when they come to audit us, so we pay for that, too. So that's, yeah.
We've tried.
We have tried that, actually. So that's just a little background on the finance piece. The other two make up the rest of it.
Yeah, I think Aaron talked about, most of this is necessitated and mandated upon us of the services that they have. The one that is a sensitivity, and we've done some major upgrades on our audiovisual and our sound systems, and that's been subject to criticism because we've got to get that in because we constantly get criticized as to how much was spent on that versus the performance. And it has, with the other departments, the same thing. We constantly have been investing a lot, rightly so, into our GIS, into our financial systems and that, and I never see the return that we're supposed to have. Most times when you go in and you want a new payroll system, they say it'll save 10% and DOD will say, okay, we're going to take 10% out of your budget going forward so that we realize in real terms those benefits. We should be looking at how do we quantify those benefits, whether it's customer service or that there is some productivity benefit to be able to show our citizens, and that's something I've been asking for years. I know Councilmember Odell has asked about that as well, and that's something to be putting down and making concrete to us. Thank you.
Good. Tom?
Well, in this area, I think we should be exploring every opportunity we can to take advantage of technology that will reduce expenses. take advantage of technology that will reduce expenses, even though we replaced a lot of the AV equipment in here a few years ago. Number one, there have been problems with it. Number two, there may be a better ship on the block right now than some of the stuff we have. It might be cheaper. I agree that we should look at the lighting issues. We could spend an awful lot of electricity, on electricity, not only in this building, but the other buildings that we're responsible for as well. And I'm not sure we're going to find any real large pots of gold anywhere here, but we should make it a regular standard operating practice to keep turning the rock over to see what can be done.
On this category, the only, we're doing in-house payroll, is that right? The payroll is in-house?
Yes, it's one person.
One person?
That also does our financial statements, so it's not a full-time.
I figured it wasn't full-time, but I will tell you that I have learned that the services that have been popping up for out-servicing payroll is very efficiently and very inexpensive. Don't want to take a job away from anybody, but you might want to do a build-versus-buy analysis on the payroll, small numbers.
We did do that. We have done that and found, actually, that we are cheaper.
Okay, fair enough.
Keeping it in-house, but we will do that from time to time.
Okay.
Good. I don't have anything to contribute at this. I was thinking about technology, exploring technology, and I'm not sure where, maybe it's in the capital budget, where we talk about our fleet and converting to electric and our sustainability program. So just a comment on that. Bob?
Yeah, I don't really think I have anything that I could add for the discussion.
I just have a question. So we get packets every week, and those are Xerox copied. Whose budget does that sit under? City managers or the city councils?
I believe that is under administrative services, because they provide them.
Okay, it's not under council.
So speaking of packets, we're actually in process of exploring, and we will bring back to council, the idea of having electronic packets.
That's where I was going.
We've, from a sustainability perspective and a delivery perspective, it will be a good thing, and we think that the technology is there to provide you with a good product at a very good price. So it will be coming your way for consideration.
Very good. And that's kind of where I was going. It's not that I don't like seeing Melanie and Lita show up on my driveway with my packet, but they're out contributing to our traffic, because they drive around with our packets, delivering them all over.
It's truly not a very efficient system.
No, and I mean, once it's available on the website, I mean, I get it at the same time on my driveway, so, yep.
And I would also add that the systems that are available, that other government entities have been using for a number of years, also make it easier for people, and frankly, staff, to access legislative records. So there's an added benefit to making information more easily searchable for the public as well.
So those council members that are rolling off of the council, I'm sorry that we didn't bring it to you earlier.
Actually, you did bring it to us.
No, actually, we did. I know we did. We did, and several folks rejected it.
January 1st implementation, okay.
Yeah, that's what we're aiming for.
The only reason I would object to that is that if you have color copies, that it's very expensive to print at home, to get the color out of the color copy. As a matter of fact, with Lyman's permission, I always send the RTC packet to Debbie Beadle to print, because it's 145 pages. A lot of it is multi-color, and I can run through almost my entire color.
The idea is that you wouldn't have to print it out from home.
But then you have to hope that you get connected when you go to an RTC meeting, and that you're at the right, you know, so that's, those are some of the issues around that, because it doesn't always work. But when I look at the city council expenditures, we could save 10% of our budget if we cut out our meals, so our food, which maybe some might help our waistlines, too. But other than that, and I know we've talked about the newsletter, because that, the newsletter plus the postage is extraordinarily expensive. And I don't know if we can send, you know, we've kind of battled that back and forth about doing that electronically or not electronically. And again, it's that issue that not everybody can access it, and we don't have the ability to really sort through. But that would be the one major expenditure, if we could figure out how that would work.
Yeah, and actually, we're, as you know, we're having our communications strategic plan, and I know that that is a topic that they will be looking at.
Well, we could always put Tim in a car, and he could deliver the letters from house to house, too. How you'd be cheaper than this 100 and...
Along with the council packets. Well, actually, we'll just put it, we'll put him on the road with a loudspeaker, and he'd be the town crier.
Another option might be to buy out my contract at a reasonable rate here. I would just retire immediately and say 50% pay for the next 20 years, something like that.
Okay. Any other comments on, I mean, I think the council compensation is, what's the status on that, Lyman?
Actually, we'll be coming, it was, I was asked that question earlier, and I believe it's coming back to the full council in September is the plan, to get it scheduled. Went to the finance committee, was reviewed there, and we were thinking about trying to get it to you in July, but your July schedule is very packed. So you'll probably see it in September.
Mike?
There was the primary, I think it was.
No, I think it has to be the general election, I think.
General election, to make sure that it was, okay.
Yeah, so I believe that that should be perfect timing.
Which tell all the candidates here that Mercer Island is voluntary. They don't get paid at all. Mercer Island City Council is voluntary.
Is that true?
I don't think so.
I'm not moving to Mercer Island. Well, they must get per de, per de, or per meeting, whatever. Yeah. 200. So Mercer Island gets $200.
They're considered voluntary, but they do get paid $200 a month. That's what I was told by the Mercer Island staff.
Without tipping the hand here, the amount of increase the committee is looking at is not what you call material.
Does that mean it's immaterial?
Probably.
Okay, human services, emergency management, non-departmental, 1.5 million. Starting with Kathy. You can swallow first.
Well, emergency management is obviously new to us, and I think that's something we've been waiting for, for a long time. I do think that we have some real challenges in the human services area. And I know Allison is leaving, but it really takes somebody who can help convene partnerships. If we're going to provide services to the city and we're not providing direct services, it would be somebody who can convene others. And unfortunately, so many of the human service activities are by school district, that it becomes a real challenge to try to convene and have services provided to our city as a whole. So I strongly support having a full-time person who can work on that, and there, especially with this Eastside pathway that I heard about, there are some real opportunities there to begin to partner with other areas and other organizations to leverage their services and provide a higher level of services to our community at little or no cost.
Kristi?
Just flipping through the, what's in the non-departmental, departmental, department expenditures. So, let's see. Emergency management, I don't even think we want to talk about cuts there. We just added that, and none of this matters if we don't have an emergency plan in place. So, sorry, I'm just still looking over the non-departmental department expenditures, and just trying to see where...
So kind of some general overview, non-departmental.
Yeah, I'm just looking over.
Top section is the voter registration costs. So these are things that aren't specific to a particular department. You have some consulting dollars in there for the town center. You have other memberships, like the Sound Cities membership, the Association of Washington Cities membership, Puget Sound Regional Council, National League of Cities, business and occupation, payments for surface water. So it's kind of almost like a miscellaneous category that's, if it's not attributable to a specific department function, then it is retained in non-departmental.
Okay, Bob?
Yeah, just a quick comment. I'll leave, I'm sure the chair of our human services committee may have some comments in that particular area, but one comment I would make is they're doing a needs analysis right now, and when they complete the needs analysis, you know, we'll have a better idea of really where we are with human services in that particular area. So that was my only comment.
Good. And I think we did get a good update on the emergency management, and as you said, we were delinquent on that. And fortunately, we survived. So, and as far as the memberships and all those associations, we've been through that before. So nothing more to add. Tom?
Yeah, I don't see anything on the non-departmental. Emergency management, I think we're right where we need to be. Catching up a little bit, but I think we're on, we're going to the right place. Human services, I have a little bit different field than you might actually believe. I mean, I think human services is a great thing that we need to do as a city. However, I see it as a lower priority to a lot of, many of the other things that we've talked about, to be perfectly fair. It is very easy to want to spend money because it's a feel-good, and it helps a lot of people in need. But I think it's a lower priority. I just, I'll end it with that.
On the emergency services issue, I'm a little concerned that we may be looking at actually having to boost some expenditures in this area once Andrew really gets going. I think we're going to find out where we need to do this, we need to do that, we need to do something else here and there. In fact, I'm very sure we'll find that. The one comment I do have is looking over the non-departmental department budget. That's always been one of my favorite things, is that we do have about $3 million of operating contingency in here. There's a $2 million for operating and another million for revenue-related department community development contingencies. And I'd like to ask Lyman, how often we actually have to dip into those?
Not overly frequently. The operating contingency is something that gives you, as council, flexibility if things do come up, if there is a cost overrun, or a project that you want to take on that has not been budgeted. So we utilize those funds. The community development contingency are for those years when development review activity falls off. So for example, when we were in the recession, we didn't lay off all of our staff. We had them do other things, but we subsidized that through that fund, or through that account, basically. As you know, the, I guess, the permitting process can't make money. We can only cover our costs. And so we've been very good at keeping our costs low, but that also means that we, people, our cost of permitting is cheaper here than it is in other cities. So we do get that side of it. But again, we do have to cover those off-year cycles, and we then replenish over time.
Okay. The operating contingency, though, is in addition to the capital fund contingencies that go with each of the major capital projects?
Correct. And this is, this is operations as opposed to capital. For example, here you've got $1.5 million listed here. We took out the contingency from that. So that is there, but typically, we don't try to utilize that.
Okay, and that does effectively roll over in the ending fund balance, correct?
Correct. Or it rolls into the next year's budget as that line it, yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Ramiro?
Yes, for the non-departmental, I don't think there's much that can be done there. Furthermore, following up on what Mayor Jaren said, back about six years ago, there was the issue on the memberships, and the city reacted and was able to show the ones that we are keeping, how we are getting that return on investment to them, because there was a lot of concern by the citizens, and that satisfied the citizens at that point. So I don't see any issue with that at this point, nor do have I heard from citizens any concern since that justification was given. Emergency management, we were delinquent. We brought that on, although its presentation was a little too long. But human services, I concur with Councilmember Hornish. I think that is a lower priority. When that position was brought on, it was a split decision. Previously, it was being held by one staff member, or actually, it was volunteer effort that was doing, and now it's up and running. Furthermore, a significant component that was expected to be of that person was the strategic plan that we ended up contracting out. So I really think that one should be up for evaluation again. I don't think it is as high a priority, and I think we should go back to see, just as it was handled before, can a volunteer handle that? Thank you.
Okay, well, that's, that pretty well covers the list here. I think the, go ahead.
It was a volunteer who had the position. I think it was someone who had a position, who was the volunteer coordinator, who also did the human services, but it was, but it was a paid position, not volunteer.
She did put in more than her 40 hours a week.
Yes, she did. Of course she did.
Yes.
One of the things that we don't talk, we don't share with the council a lot is what we're doing behind the scenes to control costs. I think you've been at City Hall and at the MOC enough to know that there aren't any days around here where any of us have our feet on the desk. We're pretty busy. But we also recognize that it's our job to control our costs and keep things down. So this year, we have made an intentional effort to look at continuous process improvement opportunities, where we can shave off hours, improve our process, use technology to streamline the packet. Just last week, we made a change in how the packet came together that saved us five hours. That may not seem like a lot, but when you add it up over a year, it is translating to some savings. So this is actively going on. In fact, we brought in a trainer that has worked with, I would say, probably two-thirds, oh, maybe not, maybe half of our staff at this point, on how to do process change. So our culture is shifting, too, and I just wanted to share that with you. It's an active part of our work plan. All the departments are on board, and that will, it's continuous, right? Continuous process improvement.
Good. I think that we've come up with some suggestions for staff to look into. I didn't see any, I didn't even hear any low-hanging fruit in here. Tom?
Yeah, I'd like for us to spend a couple minutes looking at slides 37 and 38, if we can bring those up. The next two slides.
Right.
What struck me here is this is expenditures per capita, which I think is a very good way to look at things, and it includes contract, non-contract, employee, whatever. And the takeaway here is that both in 2015, which is up on the screen now, and the next one, which is 2017, we're looking pretty darn good, frankly. That doesn't mean we shouldn't continue to try to get blood out of the rock, but we're pretty skinny.
Well, we do look pretty good there, but we keep in mind we're a different type of city than most of those others that have the big, the big box retailers and more corporate offices and that. So you have a daytime population. I sometimes think you ought to average the daytime and nighttime population before you do the per capita.
Well, look at Mercer Island. Look at Kirkland's, well, yeah, Kirkland's on there.
No, Mercer Island would be a possible comparison.
But even if you take out... But even if you take out that aspect of things, I think are pretty darn good. So, kudos to staff.
Yep. Any other comments, Ramiro?
Well, the flip side of that is in King County, we're the ones that pay the highest taxes per property tax. The average of Kirkland is $4,894, April 29, Seattle Times. We're paying $6,754. Likewise, if you go through every other city, they're below us. So, you can look at this from different slices as to how is, whether per capita. But remember, we are a very distinct city. And while Mercer Island is somewhat comparable, we are, that I know, maybe one of the few bedroom communities in the percentage.
Well, you know, we have a very high AV, Ramiro. And I don't know if you're talking about the total tax bill or...
The total property tax.
That's total, yeah.
Yeah, but an awful lot of that doesn't come here.
Property tax per property?
The average property tax, that's correct. And yes, because of the AV on that. But still, so there's the slices of the per capita, different city, and what the average citizen here is paying for it. And so, that has to be taken out.
This is valid because, keep in mind that our household is averaging three or more, which is higher than the average.
That's correct. It is higher on that. But that's why I'm saying, so you get the per capita, but you have the other size and the payments that are hitting. Our cars are better, but we also got hit higher because of the ST3 tax. And so, you hear the uproar here on that.
Okay. I would also throw out that our school systems are a major component of the total property tax bill, which we do not control in one way, shape, or form. The other thing is that most of the tax increases that the citizens of Sammamish have seen were brought on through votes, by levy votes that they actually did. The city of Sammamish has not taken a property tax increase for eight years. And so, you know, to some extent, we're being punished by, you know, other entities, perhaps, by us absorbing that, I guess, call for efficiencies at the same point in time that we're trying to be responsive to those, our citizens. But we've not gotten any of the benefit of doing the right thing, as it were.
Agreed. But that final check, what we pay is significantly higher. And tomorrow, it's going to go up again.
Well, okay. Ramiro?
Wait a minute. I just wanted to make a comment that that's just property tax.
Yeah.
But remember, there are only three cities in the county that are not having utility tax. We are unbalanced. And so, we...
Structurally.
Structurally unbalanced, yes. So, we have only two legs on the stool.
Exactly.
So, keeping that, keeping that in mind.
That's the next discussion.
Mm-hmm. That's right.
Don, I have a quick question. Can I just verify that those are actually 2017 numbers? Because it says Eastside Cities Comparison in parentheses, 2015. And all of the numbers are identical from 2015, with the exception of Bellevue and Sammamish.
Right. So, that was my comment. I don't have the data from the state for after 2015. So, all the other cities are 2015 number. I was just showing the difference between what we were in 2015. And even if you take the costs that have increased all the way to 17 just for Sammamish, showing it in that comparison.
Bellevue changed, that's why it was, Bellevue's different on the other slide.
$20.
Probably a typo.
A typo there.
All right. Very good.
Okay. Any other comments? Tom, did you have another comment?
I just want to kind of clarify my mind. These are expenditures. Now, we're running out of surplus. So, at the end, we have some money that gets transferred into capital from our operating general fund, right?
Yes.
Do any of these other cities have, are they operating out of surplus? I assume not.
They are, aren't they? Some of them are.
Right now, they are. Next year, they may not.
So, you'd have to look at every profile for every year, right? So, I mean, when we're looking at reserve levels, those are going to change over time. They're going to make different budgeting decisions, just like we make different budgeting decisions. So, it's a, it's a high-level comparison. This is just looking at expenditure dollars, though, for the different service areas. So, it's apples to apples for those service areas identified.
But I'm getting to the point, if we're paying more in taxes, we just have more money to roll over into the ending fund balances.
You have the general fund revenues, too.
We have revenues, yeah. So, here's your per capita base revenues. So, the 730 versus the 622, you're talking about the ratio between.
That's, that's the same.
Yeah, so you could...
Speaking about general fund, you're not picking up their utility taxes or their other taxes. It's not the total.
No. So, it's apples to apples. I understand all that. But I'm trying to, I'm trying to meld that with what Ramiro is saying, that we're at a higher tax rate. And I don't understand that.
We're at a higher tax rate because property taxes are a total source of income. They can charge less on property taxes because they can supplement with utility tax and larger sales tax.
Right.
Which is not in the calculation comparison.
That does go into their general fund also.
Right.
Yeah, but it's...
So, that does include the sales tax on their, on their, okay.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. So, this has all categories. So, property, sales, utility, and then their fees permits and other. And then, the total of all of those sources together is for, across the cities, per capita.
Anyone here memorize those five and then look at the expenses and see which one...
I think part of the challenge with the property tax that Ramiro's speaking of is, is that those property taxes that you're speaking of are not going to the city. So, it's certainly a bill that residents are receiving. But that, that revenue is going to King County. It's going to the school districts. We, by not taking the property, 1% property tax increase for the last eight or nine years, we've basically, you know, we're staying somewhat flat.
That's the line of his point.
So, to say that our people are paying more, to compare it to that chart, it's...
Yes and no. But they pay also for King County, for the schools, for all the...
And that's my point. But that's, I know. And that's what, that's what I'm saying, is our residents are paying a higher portion of that. But that revenue isn't going to us because we've kept, we haven't taken the 1%. We're not taking that increase. So, you need to parse out the amount that our residents are paying. And what you will find is that it's largely stable going to Sammamish. There's fluctuations based on AV. But that the bulk of what you're talking about is actually going out to King County and the school districts and elsewhere. Whereas on the 30-whatever that chart, the other chart that was showing revenues, they're taking the 1%. So, they're taking that. They've got sales tax. They're taking utility tax. Some places are taking BNO tax, which is supporting those higher levels of expenditure.
That's correct. And that's what I think what Lyman was saying. However, remember, all cities have to have those same expenses of library, schools, and that. And while we have not taken ours and gotten the credit, as Lyman says, the bottom-line check is far higher here. I mean, Redmond's at $5,000, we're at $6,754, Kirkland's at $4,000. So, our citizens are getting hit with a much bigger bill and not reaping the benefits that could have been reaped. But, and again, tomorrow, we all pay a higher tax.
Sure. You could talk about the square, every square foot of the house, too, for that matter.
And Ramiro, those are averages. Those are the averages, right?
That's correct.
So, they have a lot more small housing, right?
That's what the Councilmember Del is saying.
Always have to compare that.
Okay. I think we've covered item number three on that list.
No, no. We only did the operating side.
That's true.
Sorry.
So, cuts and, we should do the capital expenses. Do we have anything on that? We have, we've just gone through the TIP.
Wait, I know Jesse's keeping a list for our January retreat.
Actually, yes. I did start the retreat list. Just a reminder, capital, stormwater is, your capital six-year plan for stormwater is coming to you, actually, in July. It was part of your rate study. You just adopted your TIP. But that's your, I call it your minor surgery TIP. Your big TIP revisions will be discussed next year as part of the TMP. The parks capital plan is coming as part of your pro-plan update. You'll see that before the end of this year. And then, you have two new capital plans that will be coming, will probably have them drafted by the end of this year and available in the first quarter of next year for the 1920 budget. So, all of your capital plans are hitting in the next six to nine months for consideration.
Jesse, to that end, I do have a question because you said we have minor surgery TIP. But the TMP isn't supposed to be done until the fall. And we'll have to pass another TIP before we have the TMP. Isn't that correct?
That is correct. And we...
That was a lot of...
Actually, I wrote you an email today that had more acronyms in it than actual words, I realized. So, that is something that we're talking about. Your TIP, fortunately or unfortunately, is adopted every year. I hope to have enough progress that we can really start to look at prioritization of projects. Your TMP is both policy and a capital plan. So, we're going to be working on it all the way through your budget process. Okay.
So, Jesse, are you saying that every capital expense plan is frozen until we get through all this?
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying you're going to be, you're going to be touching them very soon.
Well, you know, the, as far as the TIP goes, the one that I've been most involved with, we have reached the decision to put certain projects in suspense, one big one, until we get through this meeting. And very frankly, if there's another two-year delay until we get through the TMP on this, I'm not sure I find that acceptable. For, you know, I'm sorry, I've had too many close calls on Solihull Way in the last couple of months to put up with that.
Right. So, you actually can, shall we say, determine that you want to unfreeze that fund? The TIP is set for one year at this particular point in time. The capital work on the aspects of the TMP will be coming forward. But, you know, you could come back under certain circumstances and have that discussion on those projects that you've frozen. So, that is, that is a possibility. We're not saying this is status quo. You have the ability also as council to make changes as you see fit to the work plan and to particular projects. You can change, even change the budget if you so desire through council action. So, we're not actually frozen. But we do have a budget that is in place right now that does include some capital projects that were, in fact, shall we say, suspended.
Okay. We have our, any other comments on capital expenses?
We're going to talk about how to fund them at some point, right?
TIP is one of them.
Yeah. And all of those plans include your implementation strategy as well. Prioritize list, how are we going to pay for them?
Okay.
Okay. I look at number two, which was brought up earlier. Provide direction on how to adjust city finances if public safety costs exceed 1.6 increase budgeted in 2018. Was it 1.6%?
I thought it was 2.4.
2.4 is the forecasted. So, it's going from 2018 to the forecast period, which is '19 and forward. That's the 2.4. The 1.6 was the '17 to '18.
Okay.
And it was the budgeted '17 number that was then budgeted to increase by 1.6%.
And it looks like the draft proposed from Eastside Fire and Rescue is, what, 6.4%? Is that right?
What's that in dollars?
I don't know what that is in dollars, but given the size of the budget. It's probably $500,000, $600,000.
So, basically, that's about 2% of the budget, 2%, 2.5% of the budget. On the, on the...
Property tax.
Property tax.
Chris?
So, the budget increase was 1.6%. But the actual 2017 fire contract was less than we budgeted. So, the difference between the actual contract and the '18 budget is a little more than 1.6%.
So...
How much more?
$300,000.
I'll have to get back to you on that.
Okay. It's not going to be enough to get to the 6.7, but...
No. I think $300,000 is probably close, but I'm not positive.
$380,000, when I did the calculation. The difference between the budgeted amount and the, what they're proposing at this point in time.
No. But she was talking about the actual increase from '17 to '18 budget. '17 was under.
'17, actual, '18 budget.
So, it might be a half a million dollars that we're going to have to come up with. Is that what we're saying?
Mean for the budget? No, no, no. We had, we had increased the budget in 2018 for the fire.
We increased to 1.6%. And it's going to be 6.7, maybe?
Yes. But I looked at it this morning and looked at how much the increase was, compared it to what EFER was planning on. It's about $380,000 difference.
$380,000. Oh, okay.
Yeah. But what Chris, what Chris is saying, correct me if I'm wrong, the 1.6 budgeted increase in '18 over '17 was over the '17 budget. The '17 actual came in under that. So, the increase from '17 actual to '18 budget is going to be maybe 2%. It's going to make up some of that difference versus 1.6.
Okay. So, it might be...
Still not enough. Can we make it more? Yeah, it's still a big increase. Yeah, exactly.
So, it might be $300,000 or so.
Rough numbers, two, three, yeah.
So, we're supposed to provide direction? Any thoughts on this?
We have a contingency fund, right?
It's 10% of the contingency fund.
And part of that is a contingency for EFER.
Well, we don't know what components are included in the capital expenditures, nor do we know what components are included in the equipment expenditures by detail. Whether some of that could be adjusted, I doubt that most of the rest of it, the biggest portion, was in salary increases, although there was one additional staff person. And there was some discussion from North Bend about how could we back down from the 6.6, which is the average of all of us, because all of our percentages are slightly different, to get back down to the average of 4.1% that they've been averaging over the last few years? And so, staff person and maybe looking more carefully at the equipment replacement or the capital expenditures.
I think it's up to our board members.
Don't point at me. I'm not a board member.
I wasn't. I was pointing at EFER.
Well, is that the fact at the moment?
Yeah. Those are good points. The other thing, and we're talking about public safety here, in the past years, actually, the rate of increase from the police have been higher than the Eastside Fire and Rescue. And so, I think we need to drill down on those numbers. And the percentages, as Christie had mentioned earlier, because of Clahani and others, have been rapidly approaching to the point where it's going to be surpassing the Eastside Fire and Rescue. So, it's both sides that we have to be looking at, not just Eastside Fire and Rescue.
So, how is the 2017 budget for police an actual? Must be right on, huh? Because that was a contract?
Yeah, I think it's right. It's a little bit under, but it's, of course, it's going to be, it's going to come in under. But it's...
It's under because we used their money and got interest on it while they, before they billed us.
It's not right on because we prepared the budget before we know what their actual costs are going to be.
If I could just comment, though.
If I could just comment, though, I think the mayor's comment about recently, they went through a contract renewal, a labor contract renewal. So, I just wanted to emphasize the point that you just made for our police services should be more consistent for time. I don't know how long was the, is that contract good for?
So, the last, you're talking about the guild negotiation?
Yes.
Yeah, so they just settled that. That was put in place last year, they're in negotiations now already for the next guild. So, the anticipation would be what is the cost coming out of that negotiation? And that would be an increase to this cost, once that's settled.
So, it isn't finished?
No, we're just on to the next one. So, the old one was finished.
They actually, but did they perform services without a contract for quite a while?
Yeah, that's right.
Go around.
Okay, any other comments? I didn't hear any resolution, any thoughts on? It sounds like the fire service is about like a 1% increase in property tax.
One and a half, yeah. 1% would only be...
There's new development that goes in, too.
Well, I thought we had something in here that talked about what a 1% would be.
All right, one and a half. But we've had eight years, as Chris pointed out, of no increases, even though there's been CPI going on. And the state 1% mandate, we've banked it, so...
Actually, I'll go back to my comment. I think it's up to the board to try to get that down from the 6.7 closer to what we're at before we start talking about increasing taxes. We're getting the cart before the horse again, I think.
Yeah, I, I...
Fair enough.
Yeah, I think we're halfway through the year, and I think we're, it's a little bit too early to determine where things are going to end up for 18.
Okay, then we've solved number four already also.
By year.
Well, I just heard that.
So, it's not quite...
Well, we'll give you, we'll provide more information as we learn it. Any, I guess, other direction, item number five? Any other comments?
Well, we haven't done number one yet.
Oh, excuse me. Yeah, on diversification.
Diversive.
Is there, I guess, is there a desire to continue looking at diversified revenue stream? Or are we happy with just maintaining our options as tools in the toolbox for the future?
Tom, you're first.
Yeah, I think we need to take a longer look into the future than maybe we have been. If we do the CIP and TMP, TIP rather, as currently planned, we're going to be into a deficit situation by the time we get around to it. So, I think we do need to have a discussion about, you know, how do we want to finance everything that's on these lists? And do we just push the problem ahead of us to the next budget discussion, or we keep doing that? Or should we, as a council, take a pause to do some numbers and look, say, ahead of the next five years, the next 10 years, what will be the cash requirements? And do we have identified the means to fund it? It's nice to say we will get grants, we probably will, but at the same time, I'm looking at rapidly dropping ending fund balances in these accounts. And eventually, we're either going to have to stop doing anything, or we're going to have to go to the bank, or we're going to have to start collecting additional revenue, probably some combination of all of the above. I suspect that we'll be spreading stuff out. I suspect that we will have to diversify our sources of funding. And I also suspect that the existing sources of funding may have to go up, aside from what the state, what Romero thinks the state's going to do tomorrow morning.
Seattle Times and all the channels, too.
But the, the fact is that we just cannot continue to dodge this boulder that's coming down the mountain at us.
Okay, Romero, and then Kathy.
I didn't plan to, but I will. Are we on other direction or on number one?
Number one.
So, are we going to look at number one now in detail as to the potentials? Because I do think that we have to look longer term. I do want to make sure that we come out with something actionable here, rather than say, hey, all our departments are doing great, pat ourselves on the back, and then still have this crossover looming. There's got to be some real actions being looked at, both for how are we going to, going back to your original, what are the cutbacks or deletions that make sense? And then, as a board member, I'd like to be able to have presented to me the same issues you talked about in January. What if we cut 10% of the general fund? What if we cut the, to 100 full-time employees? Not that we will do it, but what are the implications to us as we look forward? And then, we have that allows us to drive, okay, we don't want to take those implications, then what are the different revenue sources that we need to tax and tap into? And so, we can look at that, but without having this information and understanding implications in that, we're putting the cart before the horse. And that's what our citizens kept telling us out there is, the last question you ask is what is the new taxes and revenues that you're going to increase before you look at those?
I think Kathy, you were next.
Yeah, I was, I was next. And the one diversification that I would look at is the TBD, the Transportation Benefit District, which has almost uniformly passed in most communities. Some of it can be imposed, and I am, I can't quite quickly gather from this, some can be imposed just at the city level, city council level, others is, other portions are passed by a vote. And I think that is a good step for us to take, is to explain to our community what we would like to have the money for, what is the purpose of the money, and then ask them to vote for it. And we'll get good feedback if they vote yes, and if they vote no, we know we're going down the wrong direction. But I do think, especially given the kind of anti-government, anti-tax atmosphere, to the extent that we can include the community into the decision of how to tax themselves for increased services. And one of the areas that I really see that we need to think about, aside from this, is how we're going to deal with public transit if we're going to increase public transit in the community. The roads are filled, everybody I talked to says, why don't we have more transit? Why can't we get more transit to move within the community or to move without the community? And the direction that Metro is going is a fee-for-service. So, we're, we're going to have a very limited ability to get service that is going to be provided by Metro, if we can particularly get service that the school kids can use to get to Central Washington, the people who are in need that need to get to human service facilities that can't get there because they have no transit. If you, every survey that the Together Center or others do, it's lack of transportation, and people can't get to the services. I think we need to, from my perspective, I'd like to see us focus on how do we improve transit that will help our transportation system in the community and make it operate better and provide a better service to our community? And get the community involved in helping make those financial decisions that would help pay for some of these projects.
I think on the TBD, it's $20, it's consalmanic for us.
Initially.
Initially.
But then it's a closing, I'm not sure, I don't know all of it. It's pretty true, yeah. Quickly enough, because you could treat it as a quality...
Yeah, after two years.
Well, some of it can't be, is voter-approved as well.
Well, that's true.
What's rather go the voter-approved way?
$20 would be equivalent to, what, about 600,000 a year?
640.
Oh, oh, yeah, there it is. 640, roughly. Okay, any other?
That'd pay for EFER.
Yeah, yeah. You know, we also talked with the school district about the issue of not transporting the students during, from the last mile to school. And the question is, if the city subsidized the bus, busing of students in the last mile, would we actually save money on road projects that wouldn't be necessary if we can relieve congestion by busing them? And that's assuming we can't get the parents to put their kids on the school bus.
No parking sites.
Yeah.
Did you... Yeah, I did, and I agree, that, that might be one. I think it'll be a small piece of it. To answer the question about diversification, I think we should still continue to focus to try to decrease expenses, continue to operate at a surplus, and I am open to considering debt financing of the capital projects. And I'm not convinced yet that if we can decrease expenses, that we, and still have a surplus, that we couldn't service the debt with that surplus without having to raise new taxes. I don't have the numbers, I haven't, you know, that's a, that's a big thing, but at some point, we're not going to have to expend a lot of capital on the TIP, because we're going to be built out in 2060, or whatever the number is, I don't know, along after we're all gone. But there's no more capital needed, and we're still going to have revenue coming in, and that can service that debt at that point. I agree that I think we need to do the debt now for some of these bigger capital projects, and it'd be good for our citizens to have some relief and have some other places to play in the parks and everything. But I think we need to prioritize amongst those. But I'm open, I'm open to considering debt, but I don't think we should just say, because we're going to reissue debt, we're going to raise taxes. We should try to decrease expenses and keep the surplus to pay it.
Okay. Aaron, you showed an example on debt, and you took an average interest rate. What, what rate did you use for the calculation? I'm not sure where that is.
Yeah, it's actually in the packet. So, if you have, the question was, how much debt would 1.2 million per year pay for? And of course, the answer is, it depends, which you've pointed out on, based on the interest rate. So, a lot of factors that go into that. So, three different scenarios were shown. So, the principal can range between page 20.
Pages 19 and 20 have that explanation.
Yeah, 19 is our legal debt capacity, which is the overall, and then there's overall legal debt capacity that we have from the state, 721 million dollars total.
Yeah, we're not worried about that.
And we're not, that cap is not anywhere, so...
So, the bottom of page 20 in red is the 10 million issued in 2016, interest rates ranged from 0.56 to 2.5. And then, what interest rate did you use to get that bottom line, 1.2 million annual payments would pay off debt of 21.4 million, the average of it?
Well, so, it's, it's based on that particular issue, the attributes of that issue. So, those rates ranged, depending on the financing of those particular bonds. So, at that time, that was the, the range they were looking at. So, the point here is, whenever you decide to go to market, it's going to be whatever the interest rate that the market demands at that moment. 2016 was a good, I mean, that was lower. We're running about 4% now. So, you're a higher interest rate environment now. So, will that go up or down? That depends on when you go and you take your issue to market.
So, it's closer to the number in green.
So, Chris will answer.
So, you were after, what did I come up with the payment? Is it, was that your, was your question?
Well, see, the bottom line says 1.2 million annual payments would have paid off debt of about 21 million. I assume that's on a 20-year amortization.
When you issued debt, the bonds that get called earlier have a lower interest rate than the ones that get called later. So, we actually had a, an agency do a calculation for, so I just took the average of the payments. So, they calculated out of 20-year bond, and what would the payments be every year? So, I just took an average of the payments that they calculated to come up with that amount. It's no particular interest rate, because the interest rates are different, depending how long you hold the bond.
On the maturity of the bond, the earlier, the ones that matured in a year are at the lower interest rates than the ones that mature in 20 years.
So, what we can assume from Aaron is that it would take more now, because interest rates have moved up.
More like the green than the red.
Mm-hmm. So, Tom has suggested that he's open for capital bond payments. Basically, $20 million would, would close out the TIP, wouldn't it? Isn't it about 20 million short in there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The current TIP.
That's the, that's the tiny one.
The current TIP. Okay.
I would just make a comment that I think that was pretty sound, the comments that Councilmember Hornish made. You know, there's no harm in us looking at this and trying to evaluate the benefits of it. It looks like it could be a very good business decision to look at right now. And so, I would say we should look at that.
Kathy?
I was going to say, the, the one fault that I see in Councilmember Hornish's comments is the fact that we have this cap of 1% in property tax, yet our expenses are almost all increasing more than 1%. And I just don't see how, and that's what's happening with most of the cities in the state of Washington, they're really struggling with this. They're, whether it's union contracts, or whether it's just salary employees, it's healthcare is going up, salaries are going up, and it's just crashing against that 1%.
Thank God we don't have pensions.
I know, thank God we don't have a pension. But I think if we're looking at the long-term, if there isn't some change there, we're just going to be kicking the crossover point down the road.
Well, we do have some pensions through EFER.
No, not the city pension.
We might have more pension coming our way, but the Senate's looking at, at passing off to this.
It's nice to know you're pretty at all this.
Oh, the 20%?
That's public information.
Well, that's another point. Is that, how much is that going to cost us?
Yeah, it's public information.
The left two, if they don't share in it like they have in the past, was a substantial amount annually.
For us? I thought you, I thought we had talked in the Finance Committee that it wouldn't have an impact.
Well, they're, they're actually talking, the latest thing I heard is they were talking about the possibility of not including, for example, counties, in, or including counties in with the cities, so that would have a direct impact on us for, for left. So, I don't, I don't know, it was speculation at that point in time, but we had information, estimates from AWC that we chatted with them about, and also the county, so...
So, that, that loop is, yeah, the left two. So, we don't have a direct, because our employees are through contract. We've contracted King County Sheriff's Office, they would be employing the left two-covered individuals, so if their costs would go up, they're going to look probably to pass that along to those that contract with them, which would be the city. So, it's, EFER has the contract relationship as well, yeah.
Yeah, so there was some discussion early on that they would not pass that on to counties, and they would not pass that on to fire districts. I don't know if, in fact, that is what's going to happen or not.
Are we supposed to wait for tomorrow morning's paper to find that out?
No, probably the day after, because it's, they're going to announce it right before they run out the doors.
Tom?
You know, what I've heard so far in the course of, I guess, close to four hours of trying to find ways to save nickels and dimes in the budget, is there's, you add up everything we've talked about in terms of savings today, it's not going to solve the problem. I think this council, and by the way, I don't think we're going to be able to cut staff as much as has been suggested. I don't think the public is going to put up with that either. But the, the thing is, we are going to have to fund a whole bunch of capital expenses, maybe on a different schedule than we're looking at, but they will still be there. So, I would recommend that we proceed with a decision as a council on how we address this issue, from assuming status quo on the budget. And that if we do find downstream ways of getting blood out of the rock, that this be viewed as an offset to any financing requirements we may have through bonding or taxation or whatever. But frankly, one of the problems with this city, and I've said it before, is that from the transportation point of view, we haven't done an awful lot in 10 years. Yeah, we've done 244th, but once 228th was done, we have not spent a lot of money on roads. And if we don't get on with it, we will be looking at ourselves again in five years and say, why haven't we fixed this? So, my two bets is, as hard as it may be, we need to look at the debt, debt thing, and I'm totally in agreement on that, figure out how much debt we can afford under a given scenario, maximum, and then plan accordingly.
Other comments? Christie?
Well, I struggle a little bit with going down the debt road quite yet, because we have all these plans that we haven't seen yet, and we have no idea what the dollars are going to be attached to those. And I feel like this is a little premature in advance of that. Now, the Transportation Master Plan, I'm pretty sure is going to tell us that we're way behind, and that there's a lot of work to be done. So, I'm anticipating probably the need for bond to debt in order to get moving on road projects. But I still feel like there's, we haven't seen the Pro Plan and, and everything that's going to be coming down the pipe. So, I feel like it's, it's, it's really hard to be able to make a decision today, not knowing the data that will be presented tomorrow.
I don't think we have to make a decision today. But the question I have is, Romero brought up this 10% cut or down to 100 employees that we discussed at the retreat. There wasn't a consensus to direct...
This was proposed by staff to us in the presentation that we talked about in consideration, and what I... And what I'd like is staff to come back with us with that information for us to look at, and not to say that we're going to do it, but see what's the implication and costs at level of services if we do those, and then we can make the decision that we're not willing to do in these areas, and then, okay. But just to say, status quo now is not acceptable. I mean, we're now going through this and pushing it down. We have a structural imbalance that's been pointed out for years, and we have to, as a board, be able to look at numbers and be able to make a policy discussion. It's obviously not going to work here, because we're all coming back at each item and saying, well, this is tough, this is tough, and kicking it down the road. I'd like to be serious as a board, have those numbers, and allow us to analyze and say, okay, we are not going to make these cuts. We're going to need to have new diversified taxes to be brought in. But without that analysis and something put in front of us, I think we're shortchanging our citizens in this whole exercise if we come out of here just saying, status quo. And then, following up what's been said here before, we do have long-term capital needs that we're going to be identifying and prioritizing, and we can also be looking at that and seeing, how are we going to raise those revenues? Or are we going to bond against some of these sources that could come out? And I think our citizens would be supportive of understanding. But the first thing everybody asks is, what are you looking at to cut back your expenditures and services before you go to start looking at new taxes?
Well, there's certainly a lot of examples of that. King County went through that, and the Sheriff's Department, what they did is they took the most obvious places, like cut out the Marine Patrol and cut out the Helicopter Patrol, which, which, of course, we yelled about, and they expected us to yell about, and they, I'm assuming they used that as their leverage with the county council, and it worked very well.
Close station, anyone?
Yeah, see, so I should ask Lyman, Lyman, you apparently brought that up in, I don't remember, brought it up in the, in the retreat.
Honestly, I don't recall that.
I can loan you your presentation.
Okay, okay. I'd be very pleased to look at that again. Refresh my memory.
It's a Citizens for Samamish presentation.
That was, that was a Citizens for Samamish presentation. I don't think it's a city presentation.
It's not a city.
Oh, this is a good presentation.
So, okay, well, I feel, I feel.
I'd challenge staff to do the same thing.
Well, you know, staff, staff, unfortunately, I looked at that presentation, and it wasn't realistic.
But I still think the basic premise for a policy decision is, we should look at that, to say, hey, what happens and what are the implications? And yes, there may be some of the scaring, but that's something that the council can then be able to sit down and put some hands around it and saying, yeah, we're not ready to do this, or we are ready to do some of these. But I'm not, I'm not willing to accept a status quo and say that this is all an exercise, because you know what the citizens are going to say about this, if that's the case, that we're walking out of here.
Kristi?
I'm curious on the statistically valid survey that we conducted. Was there questions specific to levels of service that citizens were receiving? And was there a perception, to Councilmember Valdorama's point, about somehow there being, there's level of services so great that we could reduce it?
I don't believe that.
He asked any of those questions, though.
I don't, I don't think we got to that level of detail, but if we do another survey, I think that would be helpful to try to get to that.
Well, I'm trying to balance that with what we did here from the statistically valid survey, which was that they were willing to take on debt.
Read my lips.
So, well, but the read my lips was from not a statistically valid survey, though.
Right.
No, that's, no, that's from the virtual one, and actually to Bush's before.
Okay. Kathy?
Well, Councilmember Valdorama may think that's a good idea. I think we have enough going on and enough balls in the air that we shouldn't be taking staff time this year to look at those issues, because we've got a lot of plans that are coming on. I know Jesse's out looking at all of our facilities, looking at what the status of the facilities are, and there's going to be a lot of information coming. So have fun at your retreat next year, but I don't think that this year is the appropriate time.
So kick it down to when you're gone.
No, I think there are too much missing information at this point in time that we, it could maybe be done in November when we gather some information, but I think it's too late, and we'd have too many pieces, we'd have another conversation.
This was cited as a priority at our retreat in January. It's back now, and all I hear is kick it till you guys are gone, and I don't think that's right, and that's shortchanging our citizens.
Okay, now, now Romero, who cited as a, as a priority? This, turns out it wasn't in the.
No, no, but we had this retreat cited at the January retreat. We said we were going to come back here in July to have a financial retreat, and I don't believe the financial retreat to look at the structural imbalance and coming out and saying, status quo, let's kick it out till next year or the following year is acceptable.
So which tax do you want to raise?
Well, first, I want to see what we can cut, and that's why I'm asking, to see those analyses that can be drawn up.
Well, we had some suggestions out of the discussion today.
So I guess from our perspective, what I would propose to council is, as we go through the potential of a mid-biennial adjustment, that we look at options and, you know, look for those efficiencies. We already have a two-year budget at this particular point in time, and we look, look at potential options for council to consider if, if we see some low-hanging fruit there. I doubt very much that we will see some low-hanging fruit. I think we're going to probably see some potential cost increases over and above what we budgeted, but we will report back as we do a mid-biennial review to council. But really, the time, I think, to attack this would be at the next biennium, and we can come back with some concrete proposals on levels of service and see, and maybe make some proposals for council to consider if you do, in fact, want to, to cut expenditures.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make a proposal, and that is, I completely agree with the city manager that this does need to be part of the mid-buy. We've had a number of things tossed on the table today and discussed in some level of detail, and I'm assuming that Jesse or someone has got a comprehensive record of all this or off the tape, that the Finance Committee be tasked, working with staff, to do a deeper dive than we've done today into some of these issues, and come back to the full council with a recommendation.
Do I have a consensus on that?
Yeah, I would say.
Okay. Okay, we'll put it on the Finance Committee.
Okay.
To work with staff. Well, it's 6:38. Was there anything else on that list? Not that list.
I wonder if I could just make a comment about that. You know, when we're talking about, what are we looking at? There's a benefit that goes along with what we're talking about. It's not just going into debt. We may get some roads sooner than we're talking about. There may be some grant dollars that would be available. And I started off by saying, you know, there's also a limiting factor in terms of how many roads we can build at, at one time. So the priorities are interesting. We're waiting for the TMP, you know, to give us the priority of the entire list, but there's also some limitations of what we can build. And so when I, when I say, I think we should look at it, I don't want to be cavalier with the staff time, but I think that the staff can make some general statements to us about what they think the benefit would be, what the cost savings would be with some grants. And, and I'm not being deaf to Councilmember Valdorama's comments, that, you know, we don't have to go through and look at individuals and say, are we going to cut these people? We can look at, if we made some adjustments in our budget, I think these are general things that you can do a lot, that, does it move the crossover point? How many dollars does it take to move the crossover point, and what would that percentage be? We don't have to make it a 10% across the board and look at everybody and every nook and cranny in the city. We can look at what, how big is the issue? You know, how much are we going to save? What would 10% do? We might find 10% really doesn't do really all that much in the big scope of things, you know? I just, I always like to start off, when I'm working on a project, how many dollars do we really have on the table? And that takes, changes your interest of how hard to look at it, when you see what the benefit's going to be. So when I say I'm supportive of looking at it, again, I don't want to be cavalier with staff's time, but, you know, are there some general things that you can do, and it sounds like you can, that you can give us some options? Valuable.
Yes, we can give you options as we go forward and look at different, several different scenarios. So I would have to say that there's not fat there. We've had past council members that came in with the idea. Councilmember Curly, for example, actually came in thinking he was, he was going to clean up City Hall, there was fat there, et cetera, and all he saw was muscle. I have to say, what we've got here is muscle. And so at some point in time, you know, we have to recognize that, but we can give you options as a council, and we can work with you on that. So what we would do is look at not capital, but we would look at operations.
Right.
For, for potential operations, operational changes as such.
And I think that, you know, the point was made that the contingency fund almost covers, you know, some of the dollars that we're talking about, and maybe the bond is, maybe 10 million is too much, maybe the cuts that we're talking about, you know, are too deep.
But that's, again, you're talking bonds, that's only for capital.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But what Councilmember Hornish was making about being able to pay that, the debt off using any excess dollars that were there, rather than going to the ending fund balance, right? He was saying that we could, we could be paying that debt with some of those excesses. So cuts in the operating fund would relate to what he's talking about. So I'm not saying I support it. I think I would go around the room and say, to be honest with you, it looks like we didn't come up with, you know, a whole lot there. And, but the fact of the matter is, we might find that the percentages that we were talking about anyway aren't going to really change the crossover point dramatically, because I think I made the point, I don't know that there's a sense of urgency that we, where, how close to the, does the crossover point have to be? You know, so that might even make a difference if you're looking at it, that we're not swinging that, that point very much, that it makes.
You're right, and we are, we are not in a crisis mode. We're thinking, you know, two, or three bienniums ahead, so.
I think going through the exercise, we saw that, first of all, the, the top two items, roughly 40% of the general fund was off the board, and as we went down, there were other items that were off the, off the table for discussion. So perhaps staff could go through the budget and, and just show.
Savings.
Parks and Rec, they're vulnerable. You know, show where, where we can actually responsibly cut if we had to, because public safety is basically a no on the immediate term.
What, what he just said, the implications, what I would ask for is very specific implications. If we cut the staff by whatever percent, permitting will now, instead of the average being X number of days, it's now Y number of days. That's, that's the kind of implication I would like. If we stop paying for mowing, the, the grass is going to be, you know, six inches tall before we mow it, instead of three inches now, or whatever. Yeah.
See, actually, King County went stronger. They threatened to shut their parks. If you remember, they were going to close down Clohaney Park. So that was the way they got their 10% across.
Well, and that might be a way of getting what you want versus looking at it from a realistic point of view.
Okay, other comments for the good of the order? No? I think we've had some good discussions today. I look forward to some more good discussions. What is the timing on, on the, I think you had it up earlier, that, yeah, right there.
I think Aaron had a biennial.
So November 7th?
Yeah, so November 7th is typically when we would come with the 2018 property tax levy discussion, public hearing, mid-biennial budget adjustment time, the first reading. So this is just our normal process.
We would hope earlier in the fall, we'd have some, some, some options coming back to us.
We'll have to, we'll have to schedule some study sessions to have basically an update to council based on options for any biennial budget adjustment.
So Aaron, what's the next Finance Committee meeting scheduled?
I don't, I don't think we have a confirmed date yet. We were trying to set one for July.
I thought we set the dates.
I don't know that everybody was available, but we're trying to do one in July, and then trying to do one in September as well.
This obviously is on the agenda, so.
Okay, good. Anything else? Nope, then we're adjourned. Thank you all.